... The big... ........................ Approve kami. Si, mayroon pa. Approve na, approve.
The session is called to order. Please rise for the singing of the national anthem.
Bayang magiliw peras ang silang anan. Alam ng puso sa tipit moy buhay. Lupang hiniram, kuya ka lang magiging. Sa manlulupi, di ka pasisinil. Sa lalat at bundok sa simoy at sa lakip ng toka. May nilang ang kula at awit sa paglayang nilawahan. Ang isap ng wata at moy kagumpay naratingin. Ang pituwin na paraw niya kailan, mapay magidiling. Lupa ng paraw ng wata, aming pagsikap. Uyay laki sa tipit. Amin ligaya dapat may mahapi. At mamatay ng tali ng sayo.
Please remain standing for a minute of silent prayer. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend session.
Session suspended.
... Aunyan ang bagpet kuwarko.
Iba. Ano mo lang wala. Meron pala meron.
Ako, yung po ng apo yun. Magbibili sa es.
Yung ano?
Chip joy.
Ginger. Kailangan ha?
Last year, I'm in special number three.
On the first session.
Number three.
Parteng walang, taya's block. Taya's block. Block, block, block. I'm giving the rule. I'm giving the opinion. I'm awesome. I'm a genius. I'm a young man. Sorry. I'm all ready. I'm all ready. Internet. Brady.
Session resume.
Madam Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members.
I direct the section to call the roll of members.
Roll call of members. Honorable representatives. Abalos. Abante. Abunda. Acharon. Asidre. Ako. Adyong. Advincula. Agarao. Alba. Albano. Almario. Almonte. Alonte. Alvarez Jose. Alvarez Mercedes. Alvarez Pantalyon. Amante. Amatong. Ang. Angara. Aquino. Aquino Magsaysay. Arbison. Arenas. Arrogansha. Asistio. Atide. Omentado. Balindong. Barba. Barbers. Baronda. Barzaga. Vasco. Bautista. Bautista Lin. Benitez. Pernos. Bilyones. Biron. Bolilia. Bondok. Bongalon. Bordado. Posita. Breones. Prossas. Buain. Bulut Begtang. Bustos. Cabredo. Cagas. Tahayon Uy. Calderon. Calixto. Campos. Kawagdan. Cardema. Carey. Castro Franz. Castro Jean. Celeste. Chan. Chato. Tua. Tunggalaw. Co Angelica Natasha. Co Elizaldi. Co Pilar. Co Huango Jaime Eduardo Marc. Co Huango Marc. Colada. Coliantes. Porvera. Cruz Ambrosio. Cruz Ricardo. Uwa. Juarezma. Tagook. Dalipe. Talog. Dayanghirang. Daza. De Jesus. De Venesia. Defensor. Delmar. Delos Santos. Timoporo Muhammad Khalid. Timoporo. Siti Amina. Dionisio. Domingo. Duavit. Duhalley. Duterte. Di Faustino Ino. Di Faustino Michael Carlos. Di Ian Paul. Ecleyo. Emano. Enverga. Escudero. Espares. Espina. Estrelia. Udella. Parias. Fernandez. Ferrer Antonio. Ferrer Juliet Marie. Flores. Cortez. Frasco. Presnedi. Fuente Belia. Galayos. Garcia Albert. Garcia Dante. Garcia Jose Arturo. Garcia Maria Angela. Garcia Pablo John. Garcia Vincent. Gardiola. Karin. Casataya. Gato. Co Ed Christopher. Co Marc. Coles. Gomez. Gonzaga. Gonzalez Aurelio Dom. Gonzalez Neptali. Gonzalez Sandro. Goriseta. Tuiko. Gintu. Gulyas. Gutierrez. Agidorn. Areesco. Ataman. Hernandez. Herrera. Corribata. Javier. Po Olga Ara. Co Ricardo. Co Wilton. Punghun. Labad Labad. Lacson. Lacson Noel. Lagman. Lagon Daphne. Lagon Sunny. Lara. Lazatin. Lee. Legarda. Libanan. Limgaychon. Loyola. Luistro. Lumayag. Makapagal Arroyo. Maceda. Madrona. Magsino. Malapitan. Mangawang. Maniquis. Manuel. Maranyon. Marcoleta. Marcos. Mariano Hernandez. Marino. Marquez. Martinez. Mastura. Matibag. Matugas. Mendoza. Mercado. Mercado Revilla. Miguel. Momo. Morden. Nava. Nisay. Noel. Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe. Nograles Margarita. Nolasco. Oaminan. Olaso. Olivares. Ongchuan. Ordanes. Ortega. Uano Dizon. Padearnos. Padwano. Paglas. Palma. Panaligan. Pancho. Panotes. Pascual. Peña. Pimentel. Plaza. Plato. Primicia Sagabas. Humaren. Puno. Timbo. Rama. Recto. Rehencha. Remulia. Revilla Bryan. Revilla Ramon Yolo. Reyes. Grilio. Rivera. Robes. Rodriguez Yulojo. Rodriguez Rufus. Roman. Romero. Romualdes Ferdinand Martin. Romualdes Yedamari. Romualdo. Romulo. Roque. Tacdalan. Sagarbarea. Takaluran. Salceda. Sali. Salimbangon. Salo. Salvame. Santos. Saulub. Silverio. Singson Richel. Singson Ronald. Singson Mihan. Solon. Solon. Suwan. Suansing Horacio. Suansing Micaela Angela. Suárez. Taliado. Tamayo. Tambunting. Tan Joseph. Tan Keith Maika. Tan Reynolds Michael. Tan Samir. Tan Stephen James. Tan Tambut. Tan Chai. Tan Huatko. Tariela. Yodoro. Teves. Tiyango. Tiyeng. Tolentino. Tulfo Irwin. Tulfo Juseline. Tulfo Ralph Wendell. Tupaz. Totor. Ti. Umali. Unabia. Ungab. Valeriano. Valmayor. Vargas. Vargas Alfonso. Velasco. Veloso Toazon. Vergara. Verzosa. Villia. Villia Forte Luis Raymond. Villia Forte Miguel Luis. Villia Nueva. Villiar. Villiarasa Suárez. Villiarica. Violago. Yamsuan. Yap Chrishantel. Yap Christoffersen. Yap Advic. Yap Eric. Yu Divina Grace. Yu Jiesel Victoria. Yulo. Zamora Amparo Maria. Zamora Maria Carmen. Zamora Isabel Maria. Zubiri.
Madam Speaker, the roll call shows that one hundred sixty-five members responded to the call.
With one hundred sixty-five members responding to the call, the Chair declares a coro. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we defer approval of the previous, uh, minutes of session.
There is a motion. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Ma- Madam Speaker, I move that we now proceed with the reference of business. And for this purpose, my request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bills and resolutions on first reading, as well as communications and committee reports. So move, Madam Speaker.
The Secretary General is directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading, as well as messages, communications, and committee reports.
Reference of Business. Bills on First Reading. House Bill 9147, granting a legislative franchise to Camarines Norte Electric Cooperative Incorporated for the conveyance of electric power to the end users in all municipalities within the province of Camarines Norte by Representative Taliado.
To the Committee on Legislative Franchises.
House Bill 9148, upgrading the classification of the LTO Alaminos District Office in Alaminos City Pangasinan from Class D to Class B District Office by Representative Celeste.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 9149, declaring March 9 of every year as a liberation day of Alaminos City Pangasinan to be known as Alaminos City Liberation Day by Representative Celeste.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 9150, establishing a PNP Academy Campus in Carino Province by Representative Kuah.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 9151, establishing a Philippine Science High School Campus in the province of Carino Province by Representative Kuah.
To the Committee on Science and Technology.
House Bill 9152, amending Section 8, Article 10 of the Organic Law for the Bangsa-Mor Autonomous Region in Muslim Indana for waiving the requirements of the Supreme Court of the Philippines to facilitate the entry of competent chariah counselors as justices of the Chariah High Court by Representative Dimaporo Mohamed Khalid.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 9156, exempting prescribed drugs and medicines for mental health conditions from the imposition of VAT by Representative de Los Santos.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 9157, upgrading the salary grade levels of public school teachers in basic and secondary education to salary grade fifteen by Representative de Los Santos.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Resolutions. House Resolution 1295, expressing recognition and congratulations to Filipino athlete January B. Ubas for winning the gold medal in the men's long jump in the 2023 Motonet Grand Prix Lapinranta in Finland and another gold medal for men's long jump at the Tribuneto Meeting Internacional in Triviest, Italy by Representative Emano.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 1298, commending teacher June Elias V. Patalinhood, pride of the first district of Davao City for being one of the 2023 Metro Bank Foundation's ten outstanding Filipinos by Representative Duterte.
To the Committee on Rules.
Communications. Letters dated August 14 and 29, 2023 of the Koa Chairperson furnishing the House of Representatives with copies of their consolidated annual reports for the years ending December 31, 2021 and December 31, 2022 on certain government agencies and corporations.
To the Committee on Public Accounts.
Letter dated August 30, 2023 of the DBM Secretary transmitting to the House copies of certain reports of the national government agencies for the quarter ending June 30, 2023.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated September 8, 2023 of the Senior Citizens Party List Representative furnishing the House with a copy of their annual audit report on the National Commission of Senior Citizens for the year ending December 31, 2022.
To the Committee on Public Accounts.
Report on Fund Utilization Status Program, Project, and Implementation of the LGSF, Financial Assistance to LGUs of Tagindin Ilokosur for the quarter ending June 30, 2023, attested by the municipal mayor.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Committee Report. Committee Report Number 767, submitted by the Committee on Aqua Culture and Fisheries Resources and the Committee on Appropriations on House Bill 9191.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended.
Madam Speaker, I move that we now proceed to the calendar of business.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we now proceed to the calendar of business.
There is a motion. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, under the calendar of business for the day, I move that we consider House Bill Number 8980 as contained in Committee Report Number 766, submitted by the Committee on Appropriations, and direct the Secretary General to read the title of the measure.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure.
House Bill 8980, enact appropriating funds for the operation of the government of the Republic of the Philippines from January 1 to December 31, 2024.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of sponsorship debate is hereby approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Elizalde Esco, Chairperson of the Committee on Appropriations, to deliver his sponsorship speech on House Bill Number 8980.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Representative Elizalde Ko, Chairperson of the Committee on Appropriations, you see, recognize to sponsor his measure.
Esteemed colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, I stand before you today in support of the proposed 2024 General Appropriations Bill. This measure is the lifeblood of our government. It allocates funds to ensure that government functions effectively. The budget allows us to fulfill our promises to the people, address their needs, and move our country forward. Preparing the national budget is a complex and challenging process. It requires careful consideration of evolving economic, social, and political factors. It also entails a delicate balance act between financing priority projects and managing debt while ensuring long-term economic stability. As we do the budget, it is equally important to monitor and address the capacity of government agencies to manage and complete projects. We must ensure that they have the required tools, resources, and oversight to implement proper and efficiently. Funds that are not effectively utilized or are underutilized lead to the project delays which hinder critical infrastructure and impede economic progress. The proposed national budget for fiscal year 2024 under the administration of President Ferdinand Marcos Jr. is anchored on the theme Agenda for Prosperity, Securing a Future-Proof and Sustainable Economy. Post-pandemic recovery continues to be the budget's main focus while aiming towards the promised future of an inclusive, sustainable economy. Indeed, COVID-19 tested our resilience, strained our healthcare systems, and affected our economy. Natural disasters brought destruction and misery to many communities. And we continue to face pressing issues like climate change, income inequality, healthcare disparities. The general appropriation submits for your consideration an approval of a new general appropriations for fiscal year 2024 of 4.302 trillion. This includes 4.02 trillion program general appropriations and 281 billion in unprogrammed appropriations under House Bill 8980. The 4.02 trillion program general appropriations is 348.7 billion or 9.5% higher than 3.671 trillion in 2023 JAA. Meanwhile, the unprogrammed of 281.9 billion is significantly lower by 65.1% or 525.3 billion compared to the 807.2 billion under the fiscal year 2023 JAA. On the other hand, the 2024 National Expenditure Program by source amounts to 5.768 trillion pesos, consisting of program general appropriations of 4.02 trillion and automatic appropriations of 1.748 trillion. Program general appropriations cover national operating requirements and funding for agencies' program activities and projects. The automatic appropriations provide budgetary support for government programs already authorized, under existing, and do not require periodic legislative actions. The key priorities of the 2024 General Appropriations Act are still education, healthcare, infrastructure, social services, and social welfare, and many others. Details and amounts allocated to these programs shall be discussed by respective departments and subject of our plenary discussions today in the next few days. Following the President's visions as instructed by Speaker Martin Romaldes, this administration's budget will have special emphasis on three legacies. Legacy on specialty hospitals. Nais ng pangulo na pangalagaan ang kalusugan ng bawat Pilipino. Dahil dito, popondohan ng kongreso ang mga legacy special hospitals, tulad ng heart, kidney centers, and maging cancer. Bukod sa libreng pagpapagamot, hindi na kailangan pang bumyahe ng malayo papuntang Manila ang ating mga kababayan para malapatan ng tama at di kalidad nalunas. Ang pangalawang legacy ay ang legacy housing for the poor. Flagship program po ng pangulo ang pabahay sa pamamagitan ng 2024 budget at sa mga susunod na taon. Patuloy natin popondohan ang legacy housing program, more or less six million housing, hanggang maabot natin ang target na anim na milyon murang pabahay para sa pinakamahirap nating kababayan. And at ang pangatlong legacy ay ang legacy food self-sufficiency. Nais wakasan ng pangulo ang dinaranas nating kakapusan sa pagkaing. Dahil dito, maglalaan ng kongreso na mas malaking budget para sa agregasyon at agrikultura. Layunin natin maging self-sufficient o kayang maging net exporter ng bigas sa mga darating na taon. Susi dito ang patubig, pataba, binhi, at tamang teknolohiya para sa pagtatanim. In conclusion, the General Appropriations Bill is the cornerstone of our nation's fiscal management. It determines how public funds will be allocated to address the needs and aspirations of our citizens. Thus, the timely passage of this measure is not just an obligation, but our solemn responsibility. To quote Mahatma Gandhi, "The future depends on what you do today." This adage underscores the importance of taking action in the present to shape a better future. It is a reminder that if we want to see positive changes in our lives, communities, of all the world, we must take proactive steps today. In this spirit, I urge every member of this august body to take... In this spirit, I urge every member of this august body to take proactive steps and join members of the Committee on Appropriations in coming up with a collective decisions and recommendations to approve House Bill Number 8980, the fiscal year 2024 General Appropriations Bill. Mabalos as in Mariah Naaga, Saint Dugabos.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Stella Kimbo, Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Appropriations, to deliver her sponsorship speech on House Bill Number 8980.
The Honorable Stella Kimbo is recognized to deliver her sponsorship speech.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is my honor to sponsor the general principles of the fiscal year 2024 national budget. I assure you that the macroeconomic assumptions adopted in this general appropriations bill are with sound basis. Yet, it is not an easy task to defend such parameters considering that the Philippine economy faces external headwinds. Global core inflation continues to be stubbornly high even in advanced economies. Our biggest trading partners, namely the U.S. and China, are themselves facing domestic economic problems. Talks of a U.S. recession had only recently been dismissed, while in China, a real estate slump has caused a weakening of domestic demand. Meanwhile, India has banned exports of rice, disrupting a major source of supply for a key Philippine commodity and a main driver of inflation. Despite these challenges, I stand before you presenting a national budget that supports the President's eight-point socioeconomic agenda consistent with the targets of the medium-term fiscal framework adopted by the 19th Congress last year. The 2024 national budget sets aside resources for programs critical in accelerating our nation's growth, making investments in education, transportation, and infrastructure. On the other hand, other programs focus on ensuring that prices of basic goods are in check, thus enhancing our food security. Meanwhile, social protection programs are being strengthened to ensure that households cope with economic shocks such as illness and job loss. We need the economy to grow so we can meet our revenue targets, support our spending plans, narrow down our deficit, and reduce our debt burden over time. Still, there are current challenges preventing us from meeting 2023 targets. GDP growth is slower than expected as a result of a contraction in government spending typical of new administrations. Rest assured, the Committee on Appropriations has terminated all agency budget briefings with solid commitments from agencies to catch up with their disbursement plans. While inflation has been higher than our initial targets, with decisive interventions by the executive supported by this Congress, inflation targets should be within reach by the first semester of next year. As we begin our proceedings, allow me to point out some key principles in assessing the budget. First, in comparing the budgets of agencies, the peso amounts are not in itself good barometers of the relative importance attached by the national government to the agencies. Kung five times ang laki ng DPWH budget kumpara sa DA, hindi naman ibig sabihin na five times na mas mahalaga ang kalsada sa pagkaing. The cost of program inputs clearly matters and could be very different across agencies. Moreover, the nature of consumption, whether a good is largely a public good or a private good, is important to consider. Food is privately consumed, whereas roads are publicly used by multiple users. Hence, we should expect road construction to be largely subsidized, whereas only the aspects of farming prone to market failure should be subsidized, such as irrigation, credit, crop insurance, and farm-to-market roads. And like roads, national defense is also another example of a public good. Second, because of our budget ceiling, one must always think in terms of trade-offs. Every proposal to increase the budget of one agency requires the reduction of the budget of another agency. Dagdagbawas ang principyo. Pag meron budget na dadagdagan, meron dapat pagkuunan. While navigating this is challenging, it is also crucial to ensure that essential programs receive adequate funding without causing long-term economic setbacks. Third, we are deficit spending. Our revenues are not sufficient to fund our expenditures. Our fiscal space is limited. Every sector has more needs than what the government can presently fund. So in the end, we must prioritize. We must prioritize to address the pressing needs of today and to chart the path towards a greater future. This is the importance of the macroeconomic assumptions we adopt for the 2024 national budget. As members of Congress endowed with the power of the purse, our undertaking for the next two weeks is of utmost importance. The choices we make today will resonate through generations, shaping the Philippines of tomorrow. I urge every honorable member of this Congress to approach this budget with the full weight of that responsibility, to engage actively, to ask important questions, and most importantly, to prioritize our nation's welfare above all else. Let us not merely approve a budget, let us craft a legacy. And with that, Madam Speaker, let us begin the debate on the 2024 national budget, and may the debate be productive, efficient, and enjoyable. Maraming salamat po.
Thank you. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend the session for one minute to allow the technical staff and the resource persons of the committee access to the floor.
There is a motion. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none.
Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill Number 8980.
There is a motion. Is there any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we resume consideration of House Bill Number 8969 under Committee Report Number 728 and that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure.
House Bill Number 8969, Anna Creating a Sustainable Fiscal Framework for the Pension System of the Military and Uniform Personnel, Providing Mechanisms for the Disposition of Government Assets for the Purpose in Appropriating Funds Therefore.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, the parliamentary status of this bill is that it is in the period of individual amendments.
There is a motion. Is there any objection? The Chair is none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Dan Fernandez to introduce his individual amendments.
The Honorable Dan Fernandez is recognized for his amendments.
Thank you so much, Madam Speaker. May I propose the following amendments on House Bill Number 8969 under Committee Report Number 728 for the continuation of the individual amendments. May I propose the following amendments on Page 7, Section 16, Letter B, the mandatory contribution. Delete lines 12 to 33, except the title "B: Mandatory Contributions," and replace with the following: "B: Mandatory Contribution: New entrants shall contribute 9% of their monthly compensation as personnel share and the national government share 12% as its share." Will the good sponsor accept these representations, individual amendments?
We accept.
The Honorable Joyas Salsetis is recognized. And what does the sponsor say?
We accept.
Thank you so much, Madam Speaker.
What does the majority say?
Madam Speaker, I move to approve the amendments.
The amendments approved. Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved.
Thank you so much, Madam Speaker. And the next individual amendment that this representation would like to propose is on Page 8, Section 19, Disposition of Military and Uniform Services Assets. Line 28, delete the word "committee" and replace it with the Department of Finance.
What does the sponsor say?
We accept.
What does the majority say?
We move to approve the amendments.
There is a motion to approve the amendment. Is there any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved.
Thank you so much, Madam Speaker. The next individual amendment is on the same page, line 32. Delete the word "committee" and replace it with "Department of Finance." Will the good sponsor accept this amendment?
What does the sponsor say?
We accept.
What does the majority say?
Madam Speaker, we move to approve the amendments.
There is a motion to approve said amendment. Is there any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved.
Thank you so much, Madam Speaker, Mr. Sponsor. On Page 9, line 3, delete the word "committee" and replace it with "Department of Finance." Section 19 shall now read as follows: "Section 19, Disposition of Military and Uniform Services Assets. Within 30 days from the effectivity of this act, the concerned military and uniformed services shall submit a complete list of their real assets in the manner prescribed by the Department of Finance to identify additional sources of funding for budgetary support of their services and augment the financing of the separation, retirement, and pension benefits of their military and uniformed personnel under existing laws and this act. Thereafter, the Department of Finance shall conduct a complete accounting and inventory of the assets of military and uniformed services that may be used to support the MUP trust funds, including the amount, value, description, and nature of such funds, properties, assets, records, choices in action, and other rights, claims, or causes of action pertaining thereto, and submit a report to the Office of the President, both Houses of Congress, and the Commission on Audit. Within 30 days from the receipt of the inventory by the Department of Finance, the Commission on Audit shall audit the accounting and inventory of the assets of concerned military and uniformed services to determine the completeness of the inventory and establish the reasonableness of the asset valuation." So, will the good sponsor welcome these individual amendments?
What does the sponsor say?
We accept.
What does the majority say?
We move to approve the amendments.
There is a motion to approve said amendment. Is there any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved.
And the second to the last individual amendment that this representation would like to propose is on Page 12, Section 30, Repeating Clause, Line 22. Delete the number 75. Said section shall now read as follows: E, Section 39, Republic Act Number 6975, otherwise known as the Department of the Interior and Local Government Act of 1990. Will the good sponsor accept this individual amendment?
What does the sponsor say?
We accept.
What does the majority say?
We move to approve the amendment.
There is a motion to approve said amendment. Is there any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And the last individual amendment in reference to the individual amendment that posted by Representative Raoul Boboy C. Tupas yesterday and within his concurrence to the same, I would like to propose amendment and move for the deletion of paragraph under Section 16, Letter D, Number 4, on the source of funding for the AFP Trust Fund, specifically Number 4, shares of the AFP from the sale of military camps provided for under Republic Act Number 7227 as amended. At least 50% of the proceeds, net of direct expenses authorized to be deducted from such proceeds from the lease and/or joint venture agreements and such other dispositions pertaining to the same camps in accordance with applicable and/or existing orders, rules, and regulations and issuances.
What does the sponsor say?
The amendment is not yet complete, Your Honor.
On Page 8, under Section 16, Funding Sources, delete the item D4. D4, share of the AFP, what I mentioned a while ago, for... and then... This will be the final version. Is shares of the AFP from the sale of military camps provided for under Republic Act Number 7227 as amended and at least 50% of the proceeds, net of direct expenses authorized to be deducted from such proceeds from the lease and/or joint venture agreements and such other disposition pertaining to the same camps in accordance with applicable and/or existing orders, rules, and regulations and issuances. And remember the section accordingly. Will the good sponsor accept this individual amendment?
What does the sponsor say?
We accept.
What does the majority say?
We move to approve the amendment.
There is a motion to approve said amendment. Is there any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no other member who wishes to propose amendments, I move that we terminate the period of amendments.
There is a motion to terminate the period of amendment. Is there any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I now move that we vote on second reading on House Bill Number 8969.
There is a motion to approve House Bill 8969 on second reading. Those who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 8969 is approved on second reading, as amended. Congratulations. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I now move that we resume consideration of House Bill Number 8980.
There is a motion to resume House Bill 8980. May the Secretary General read the title of the bill.
House Bill Number 8980, Anna Appropriating Funds for the Operation of the Government of the Republic of the Philippines from January 1 to December 31, 2024.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, the parliamentary status of this House Bill is that it is in the period of sponsorship and debate.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we proceed with the interpolation, with the period of interpolation and debate.
There is a motion to proceed with the period of interpolation and debate. Is there any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I now move that we recognize the Honorable Stella Kimbo to sponsor the measure.
The Honorable Stella Kimbo is recognized to sponsor the measure.
Madam Speaker, we acknowledge the presence of the heads and officials of the following departments and agencies. The Department of Budget and Management, Secretary Amena F. Pangandaman, Yusek Janet B. Abuel, Yusek Wilford Wil L. Wong, Yusek Goddess Hope O. Libiran, Yusek Maria Francesca M. De Rosario, Yusek Joselito R. Basilio, Yusek Rowena Candice M. Ruiz, Yusek Dennis E. Santiago, Yusek Maria Gionesia Guillermo, Yusek Genmaris Entredicho Caong, Yusek Aquiles Gerard C. Bravo, Yusek Rolando U. Toledo, Yusek Gerardo E. Mala, and Yusek Mary Anzei de la Vega.
We acknowledge the presence of the heads and officials from the Department of Budget and Management headed by the Secretary Amena Pangandaman. Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Madam Speaker, from the Department of Finance, we acknowledge Secretary Benjamin E. Jocno, Yusek Juvi Donofrata, Yusek Glenda Rumor, Yusek Maria Walhati Dorotan Tuseko, OIC Yusek Dakila El Tinapaw, OIC Yusek Carlo Adriano, Yusek Nino Raymond Alvina, Yusek Maria Edita Tan, Yusek Bayani Agabin, Treasurer Rosalia de Leon, Philippine Tax Academy President Hil Beltran, NTRC Head Ed Marlin Lucero Kalubag, SEC Commissioner MacGill Bryan Fernandez, Insurance Commission Commissioner Reynaldo Regalado, BLGFDED Army Advincula, BLGFDED Maria Pamela Kison, BLGF ED Consoracion Agcawili, PMO Chief Maan Vanessa Doctor, PCIC VP OIC Melba Manalo, VAR Commissioner Romeo Lumage Jr.
We acknowledge the presence of the Department of Finance, the heads and officials headed by Secretary Benjamin Jocno. Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Madam Speaker, for the National Economic and Development Authority, we acknowledge the presence of Secretary and Director General Arsenio Balisakan, Yusek Joseph Capuno, Yusek Carlos Abad Santos, Yusek Monina Pagunsan, Yusek Melbourne Pana, Yusek Kristalin Ui, Yusek Sara Daway Ducanes, Yusek Reynaldo Cancio, Yusek Roderic Planta, Yusek Jonathan Ui, Yusek Greg Pineda, Yusek Florente Ictiven, PSA Yusek Dennis Mapa, PPP Center DED Jeff Rimanalo, Popcom Executive Director Lisa Berzales, PIDS President Aniseto Orbeta Jr., TSIC Commissioner Ernesto Albano, PSRTI Executive Director Josefine Almeda, PNVSCA Executive Director Donald Gawe.
We acknowledge the presence of the heads and officials from the National Economic and Development Authority headed by Secretary Josefine Balisakan. Welcome to the House of Representatives.
And finally, Madam Speaker, from the Banco Central ng Pilipinas, may we acknowledge the presence of Deputy Governor Francisco Dakila, Monetary Board Member Bruce Torrentino, Managing Director Laila Magda Rivera, and Deputy General Counsel Asma Panda.
We acknowledge the presence of the heads and officials from the Banco Central ng Pilipinas. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Stella Kimbo, the Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Appropriation, to answer questions on the proposed budget or to answer questions on the debate on the general principles and provisions.
The Honorable Stella Kimbo is recognized.
Madam Speaker, I now move that we recognize the Honorable Gabriel Bordado for his interpolation.
The Honorable Gabriel Bordado is recognized for his interpolation.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I have some clarificatory questions here. Madam Speaker, the total budget for 2024 is 5.768 trillion pesos. Is that correct?
Yes.
Madam Sponsor?
Yes, that is correct, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, how much will be drawn from the local incomes and revenues? And how much will be taken from borrowings? Madam Speaker, Madam Sponsor?
From borrowings, it would be 2.46 trillion pesos.
From what, Madam Speaker?
From gross borrowings, that would be 2.46 trillion pesos.
From borrowings, we will be taking 2.46 trillion pesos. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And from local income and revenues, the balance, is that correct, Madam Speaker, Madam Sponsor?
Yes. Balance? Yes, the balance would be the revenues.
So, in other words, in percentage, Madam Speaker, Madam Sponsor, can you give us the percentage? What's the percentage of the borrowings? What's the percentage of local income and revenues in the total national budget for 2024, Madam Speaker, Madam Sponsor?
So, for gross borrowings, that would be 43.32% and 57% for local revenues.
57% for local revenues and...
43% for...
43% for...
Borrowings.
Borrowings. Okay. Now, we have, Madam Speaker, we have this percentage to GDP. As of now, Madam Speaker, Madam Sponsor, what's the current percentage to GDP, the debts to GDP?
Right? The debt? It's 61% at the moment.
61%? The ratio of...
That's debt to GDP.
Yeah, debt to GDP. So, in other words, Madam Speaker, Madam Sponsor, we are still in the so-called... How do you put that? Madam Speaker, 61% is still unacceptable percentage.
Sorry? Accept.
Madam Speaker, the sponsor was telling us that the debt to GDP ratio as of now is 61%. So, in other words, Madam Speaker, we are not yet in a tight situation. Is that correct, Madam Sponsor? Meaning, the international financial institutions can still let us borrow the necessary funding?
Well, right now, Madam Speaker, we... We look at... So, international institutions such as the IMF would look at... The international standard as of the moment is 70% and compared to other countries such as... Malaysia, for example, Malaysia is at 61%. Japan is at 261. Singapore is at 134. China is at 77. So, we are at a comfortable situation at the moment. And in addition, our DBCC has assured us that our debt to GDP ratio is projected to settle at 60% by 2024. So, this is the assumption that we are adopting for our general appropriations bill, Madam Speaker.
Oh, thank you, Madam Sponsor, Madam Speaker. So, the sponsor here, Madam Speaker, is telling us that we are in quote-unquote "comfortable" position insofar as our finances are concerned. So, in other words, we can easily obtain the 2.46 trillion pesos needed for our national budget. Is that correct, Madam Speaker, Madam Sponsor?
That is correct, Madam Speaker.
And then, Madam Speaker, Madam Sponsor, how about the mix? In the... In the debts?
The mix in terms of foreign and local?
Yes.
So, it is... We have more foreign than local. Sorry, we have more local. We have more local than foreign. It's 75%... It's 75% local, 25% foreign. And the reason for why...
75%, Madam Speaker, local? And 25%...
Foreign.
Foreign.
Yes, that is correct.
That's the mix.
Yes.
Now, we have seen the devaluation during the past few months. How will this affect, Madam Speaker, the financing?
Yes, so precisely, that's the reason for why we are biased for... We want to have more domestic than foreign. So, in a sense, we are able to manage the risks better in that sense. So, that's the reason for why there's more domestic than foreign in our portfolio of loans.
Madam Speaker, I fully agree with the sponsor, but is this really the situation?
Yes, but of course, we cannot... We also need to borrow from abroad. We cannot rely fully on domestic sources because doing that would, what we call, crowd out private sources and would, in the end, increase interest rates so much such that... And that would ultimately cause investments to drop. So, we don't want that to happen. So, in the end, that would mean having to source some of our loans from abroad. And of course, that would also mean having to take advantage of some concessional loans from our development partners. So, that's the reason for why there's a 25% foreign loans.
So, Madam Speaker, in summation, for the national budget of 5.768 trillion pesos for the year 2024, 43% will come from borrowings and 57% will come from local income and revenues. And the mix will be 75% local and 25% foreign loans.
That is correct.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Thank you very much, Madam Sponsor. I have another clarificatory question here. A week ago, Madam Speaker, we had a meeting with the Department of Transportation. And I was asking the Undersecretary, Mr. Cesar Chavez, about the funding for the... Be called Express or the PNR South Long Hole project, Madam Speaker. And Undersecretary Chavez answered that I should be asking the Department of Finance regarding the status of this particular project. the Department of Finance regarding the status of this particular project. As early as 2018, Madam Speaker, the Department of Transportation had assured us that this would be implemented. Madam Speaker, Madam Sponsor, what is the real status of this project?
Currently, Madam Speaker, we are looking for financing for the PNR South Long Hall project. There is a proposed budget of three-point-eighty billion pesos for 2024.
Madam Speaker, the original budget for this in 2018 was one-hundred-seventy-five billion pesos. What happened, Madam Sponsor, Madam Speaker?
So, Madam Speaker, the amount budgeted for 2024 covers feasibility studies. So this is the initial phase of the project, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, feasibility studies? But this was done as early as 2018? Madam Speaker, I am very concerned about this project because it will impact the economic lives of those living in the Bicol region. So I am really keen on knowing whether this will be implemented or not. Madam Speaker, let me profound a question again to the sponsor. Is the government... Madam Speaker, intending to implement this project or not?
Yes, Madam Speaker, there is a strong commitment from the government. They will pursue this project, Madam Speaker.
But, Madam Speaker, when will the government start the implementation of this project?
So again, Madam Speaker, for 2024, the plan is to undertake the first phase, which is the feasibility study. And again, this is going to be financed by a loan from the Chinese government, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, what happened to the studies conducted in 2018, 2019, and the previous years?
So, Madam Speaker, this continues to be a priority project, except that they will have to change the financing arrangement. And therefore, at the moment, some changes will have to be done in terms of financing. So right now, that is the situation, Madam Chair. They need to secure another source of financing. But they are definitely going to pursue the project. And for next year, they will undertake the feasibility study, but under a different financing arrangement, Madam Speaker.
So in other words, Madam Speaker, we don't have the funding to support the project at this stage. Is that correct, Madam Sponsor?
So at the moment, Madam Speaker... Madam Speaker, this is in the 2024 Program Appropriation. So it will be financed even using local sources, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker...
So again, let me clarify. Previously, the intent was to use a Chinese loan. But because there arose certain problems with that financing arrangement, they decided to cancel that. And at the moment, in case alternative foreign financing arrangements cannot be pursued, local sources will be used. But definitely, they will undertake the feasibility study come 2024. And that is the commitment that our economic managers are giving, Madam Speaker.
So, Madam Speaker, wala na.
Wala na po.
Hindi na implement a project. And...
Under China.
The people will be waiting for another decade before this can be implemented.
Madam Speaker, uulitin ko po, ang wala na po ay ang Chinese loan. Pero patuloy pa rin ang project. At mag-uumpisa po sa feasibility study come 2024. Klaro po na nasa 2024 GAB. Nasa Program Appropriations po siya. Wala po siya sa unprogrammed, nasa programed po siya. So, ang mangyayari po, ang gagamitin po natin, kung hindi po matuloy, ang alternative foreign funding, ang gagamitin po ay domestic source, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Sponsor, thank you, Madam Speaker. I do hope that this project will soon be implemented. Thank you.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Representative Bernadette B. H. Herrera of the party list BH to interpolate on the general principles and provisions.
The Honorable Bernadette B. H. Herrera is recognized for her interpolation.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, my tweeting. Madam Sponsor, well, I'll go straight to my favorite topic, the earmarked revenues. Madam Speaker, Madam Sponsor, my question is because from last year, I asked already the DBCC family, Magandang umaga po sa inyo lahat. Ano bang balak natin dito sa earmarked revenues? Because year in and year out, we have a balance of 688 billion for December 2022. So I'm sure lumaki na naman yan for December 2023. Nasan po ba itong earmarked revenues na ito right now? Where are they deposited? Who's in charge of it? Ano pong interes na nakukuha nito? Hindi ko po masyadong nakuha 'yung sagot ko last year because sabi, magpapadala ng sagot sa akin. But one year after, wala pa rin po. So now, I would like to ask these questions again.
Okay, so... A portion of your earmarked revenues are programmed. Okay, so, and the programmed portion goes to your special account. That's your SAG-F. So that would go to the different agencies. The rest would go to... The rest would go to the General Fund. So, and the General Fund is used to fund the entire government.
But this is earmarked revenues?
Yes.
Teka lang ah, una-una, wala siya sa GAA natin. Kahit na 'yung inallocate natin sa BAWAT agency, it's not part of our GAA. It's a separate account. The earmarked revenues are separate account. Madam Speaker, Madam Sponsor, hindi natin siya makikita sa ating NEP. Kasi nakahiwalay po siya. Every time may magbigay ng poddo ang isang ahensya, kuya ang DBM ibibigay sa DICT, hindi natin sa makikita sa NEP. It's separate.
Okay, in your, in Table 3 of the GAB, you will see a line that says "special accounts in the General Fund." That is the earmarked revenues. And you will see for 2024, it says 26.5 billion. So that's the portion of your earmarked revenues that goes to... To the program, okay? Now, the 1.007 of the total 1.034 trillion goes to the General Fund, which I was telling you about earlier.
So, linawin ko, Madam Speaker, 'yung sinasabi mong 26 billion, pupunta siya as part of the 5.7 trillion natin? Is it part?
Yes. That... Yes.
So it is part? Ganyan ko lang narinig yon. So part siya ng 5.7 trillion? Is this, are we sure of this?
Yes, so again, the 26.5 in the SAG-F. The SAG-F gets programmed. The SAG-F gets programmed as part of the 5.768. Right?
Sige.
Okay, now the balance, the 1.007 trillion, which is the first line in your earmarked revenues, which is your BASF, B.15, your favorite table, the first line...
I don't have that table. If I can get a...
B.15 of your BASF. Line 1 says "use as a funds." Line 1 says "has a balance of 1.007 trillion."
So that's the balance of the earmarked revenue now?
That's net of the 26.5.
So how much is the balance as of today of the earmarked revenues?
No, so just to explain, the 1.007 trillion goes to the General Fund.
Yes, if it goes to the General Fund...
The General Fund is the one that funds all other agencies.
Madam Chair, Madam Sponsor, Madam Speaker, paano mangyayari, 'yung earmarked siya eh? Hindi mo siya pwedeng i-fund 'yung other agencies. Nakareserve siya to fund them for future. That's why it's earmarked. It's earmarked by several laws that we have passed. So, nasa General Fund siya, pero ang pag-decide to how to use it is DBM. Is that right?
Yes.
So my question is, is this an earning... If it's in the General Fund, nag-earn ba to ng interest?
Yes.
So saan ipupunta kaya 'yung interest? Because hindi ko nakikiting interest income from that 1 trillion earmarked revenues.
It earns interest. It's in... It goes to a special account.
So meron po bang isang account? 'Yung lahat ng earmarked or each department may kanya-kanyang special account?
Sorry, can you, let's retract. Can you please continue?
No, kasi di ba 'yung tinarinsin say mo, dun muna tayo. How much is the balance of the earmarked revenues as of today?
Okay, what is the balance? Balance, the balance as of December 31, 2022, as reported in the BASF, is 688, 390, 681, as reported in the BASF. But let me ask the treasurer, how much it is as of today? Because ano to eh, may discrepancy to eh. So I'll, let me ask.
Yes, thank you.
Based on our records? Yes, based on the treasurer's records, it is 766... Billion? 766 billion, 358 million, 712,602.
Okay, Madam Speaker, sheing question ko. So this is deposited in separate accounts per department?
There is separate ledgers.
Separate ledgers, but in one account?
Yes.
So my question is, you said it earns interest?
Yes.
Does it go to the agency? Does it go to the department? Because if it's the fund of the agency, every time it earns interest in separate ledgers, does the interest go to the agencies? Because I do not see that...
Yes, it goes... All interest, all interest income goes to the national government.
So it goes to the national government. Can we just have a report on that? On how much we have been earning in interest for this one?
Yes.
Thank you. And then my next question is, how does DB... Ah, sorry.
Madam Speaker, I think the confusion, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that when we earmark, when we pass a law and earmark a certain amount for a specific purpose, for example, we say 10% of PACOR income should be earmarked for a certain activity. We think that the entire 10% automatically for the next year is automatically for that particular activity. That's what we think it is. So if, for example, the computation is for the following year, 1 billion pesos, ang computation ng 10% na yon, ang akala natin, 'yung 1 billion pesos na yan ay buong-buo makikita natin sa susunod na NEP. Yun po ba?
Madam Speaker, wala naman po ako akala. I'm just basing on the amounts that we have. Meron, every year kasi may specific amounts that are, may revenues, may specific revenues.
Yes, so kasi nakikita natin na 'yung revenue may disparity dun sa programmed expenditure. Right? So usually, 'yung expenditure ay mas maliet dun sa revenue. So yun ba 'yung tanong?
Yeah, because there's a balance. So that balance, the money is here, the money is with us, the national government.
Yes.
There's a balance. Like you said, the balance is 766 billion.
That is correct.
So that is deposited in our account, the General Fund.
That is correct.
And I was asking the General Fund, kung BAWAT agency may different ledgers. And then there's an interest income because 766 billion, if you deposit it, ang laki ng interest nun. Like for 2022, how much interest did we earn?
Okay, they don't have the... We will submit the report to you, but because they don't have the accounting right now. But this is actually, the legal basis for that practice is the Admin Code of 1987. It is clearly stated that that is the practice that should be adopted.
Yes, okay. I just want to know how much that interest is. And then, hindi siya nagagamit nung agencies, right? According to the code of practice, whatever the interest income is, hindi siya nagagamit ng BAWAT ahensya. National government ang gumagamit siya, it goes to a fund. Now, the reason why I'm asking this is because... Now, the reason why I'm asking this is because naaano, na, 'yung lagi nating tanong, madam sponsor, is how does DBM decide how much to give each agency every time? Dahil yun 'yung minsan, kahit kailangan ahensya, hindi nila nabibigay. So hindi ko alam kung tinitipid ba ni DBM ang pagbaba dun sa agency despite the fact that they have a program. For example, DILG. Napakadami nating fire trucks na kailangan sa ating bansa. There's a 6 billion available balance of that, na pwedeng pagnirelease ni DBM lahat yon, pwedeng magkaroon ng fire truck 'yung buong Pilipinas, magkaroon ng fire station lahat ng Pilipinas. So how does DBM decide na bakit 1 billion lang every year ang binibigay niya kay DILG for the fire stations and the fire trucks? Wala naman po dun sa batas, or wala namang ano na rin sa sabing, o limited ka dapat sa binibigay mo. If the agency can accommodate it, if the agency has the absorptive capacity to do it, then bakit natin tinitipid ang pag-release natin sa mga ahensya?
Madam speaker, um, the parameters that are used for the programming, for the earmarked funds, are the same parameters that are used for the regular programming for every agency's budget, which are the usual, which is utilization. So ganun din po yun. So kung mababa rin ang utilization ng isang ahensya, pagdating dun sa earmarked fund, ganun din unfortunately.
Madam speaker, madam sponsor, DILG, let's just focus on DILG. Ano ang naubos ba ni DILG 'yung 1 billion natin na binigay? As of today, 2023, we gave 1 billion to them? What is their absorptive capacity on that item now?
So the utilization rate for the SAGF of the DILG is? 94%.
So 94. So meaning, pwede na silang humingi ulit at humingi pa ng 1 billion para i-release sa kanila. Tama?
Yes. Um, pagdating sa, pagdating sa earmarked revenues naman, there is a chance for the agencies to make a request as long as it is within the year.
Yes, uh, yun nga po 'yung point ko. So kailan pa naging 94% ang absorptive capacity ng DILG?
Um, madam speaker, this 94% is for the special account?
Yes, I understand that. For the 1 billion, we're just talking about the 1 billion. I know what I'm talking about.
Is it a reason? It, it's as of August, madam speaker.
So as of August, nagrequest na ba ulit sila ng panibago? Kasi kami dito sa Congress, we keep on asking for fire trucks, for our constituents, fire stations, for our pla, for our... Pero, sasabihin, pagnagsabi kami sa DILG, humingi kami sa DBM, pero ayaw kaming bigyan. Absorptive capacity as of August, 94%. So meaning, pwede na ulit magbigay ng isang billion ulit at half the year. And alam ko, natatandaan ko, during the plenary debates, also sinabi sa akin, independent ang absorptive capacity ng earmarked revenue. So I would just like to put on record, at any time ba pwede ulit magrequest na si DILG para makahingi na tayo ng fire trucks at, uh, fire stations para sa ating mga constituents, madam speaker, madam sponsor?
Yes, that is correct, madam speaker. And in fact, um, ang DILG ay nakapagrequest na. And so in process na po ang kanilang request, at um, mukha naman, kaya naman ma-process, um, within, uh, this, within the allotment cycle, madam speaker.
Madam speaker, madam, I look forward to that, because for the past several years, I haven't seen that happen. And I'd like to put that on record. For the past years, I haven't seen that happen. And I want to see it happen, because I want to see na totoo sa'yo, ang DBM, na pagni-request talaga, kaya naman ng oras, then sana ibigay natin, because andun 'yung pera eh, sa'yo naman.
At madam speaker, pati sila din daw, first time din nila nakita na nangyari sa DILG. So, um, pagtutulungan natin na mangyari for the first time, uh, maging totoo, uh, at ma, maging successful ang DILG sa first time na request nila, uh, dito sa, um, additional request, dito sa ating earmarked revenues.
Last year may request din, pero hindi nila inapprove. Nangyari na yun, last year may request, nagfollow-up pa ko dun sa request na yon, but that did not happen. So I hope hindi mangyayari ulit yun ngayon. Because last year, mataas din ang absorptive capacity nila, naubos din nila, nagrequest din, pero hindi po naibigay. So sana this year, hindi to first time, because last year, nakapagrequest na sila.
So, madam speaker, according to the DBM, uh, last year, hindi naman daw naubos ang kanilang, uh, pondo. So siya ngayon, baka naman iba ang sitwasyon, at sana, uh, naubos, mauubos sana nila. And, uh, kapag ganun ang sitwasyon, ay baka naman sakali ngayon ay maapprove ang, uh, additional request.
Madam speaker, siguro tignan natin yun, because alam ko naubos nila last year. So just submit na me na lang that one. My next is DICT. Eto 'yung pinagtalunan natin, madam sponsor, nagulat ako dahil sabi ng BTR, meron lang siyang 4 billion dun sa 22 billion ng DICT. Hindi pa po ako nasasagot dun ngayon, bakit po nagkaganon? I haven't received an answer to that question, that why does BTR only have 4 billion, when according to this balance, DICT for SUF has a 21 billion balance for SUF? But BTR doesn't have that amount?
Um, madam speaker, this pertains to the spectrum fees, right?
Yes.
Madam speaker, may we have a, uh, two-minute suspension?
Session suspended.
Madam speaker.
Session resumed. Honorable Stella Kimba, you may proceed.
Yes, so with respect to, uh, spectrum user fees, the problem is that they have a very low utilization rate. So every year, ang naka-program po is 2.5 billion. Um, but, uh, for example, for 2022, ang actual spending is 723 million. So that's about a 28% utilization rate.
Madam speaker.
Yes.
If I may interrupt, that wasn't my question. My question was, if you recall during the DICT hearing, sinabi ng Bureau of Treasury that the money with them, as far as they are concerned, is just 4 billion. Pero according to the earmarked revenues natin, ang total balance of the SUF is 21 billion. Pero ang nasa Treasury lang daw is 4B. So nasaan 'yung 21 minus 4?
Can you open your phone? Open your phone. Can you open your phone? Yes, uh... The running balance, okay, total remittances as recorded is since 2018, is 28 billion, 451 million, 234,341. Total releases, 13 billion, 213 million, 901,467. So the running balance is 15 billion, 237 million, 332,874. So there must have been a mistake dun sa 4 billion reported to you, madam speaker.
Um, thank you, madam speaker. Actually, that was reported to us during the DICT hearing.
I remember, so...
Yeah, pero according to the data, it's 20, as of December 2022?
It says 21 billion. Yes, madam speaker, that's, that was what I was trying to explain to you earlier. What is reported here in the balance, as I also had discovered when we were trying to reconcile the HEDF fund, um, is that there are discrepancies between what are printed in the BASF. Because as of the time of printing by the DBM, um, 'yung date ng printing kasi, anong date ito prineprint?
Pero ang laki ng...
April eh, so, because, or July. So as of that date, and the time that we have hearings, may, may discrepancy na.
Madam speaker, pero hindi siya pwedeng magkadiscrepancy, because pareho tayo sa total eh. Ang total running balance as of 2022 is 688, 688, 390, 681. Parehas tayo dun ang total eh. At to come up with that total, 21 billion ang balance ng DICT dun. If you recall, you, you also answered me earlier that the balance as of 2022...
This is 2022, huh?
Yes. You told me that the balance of is 688, 390, 681. At ang DICT dun sa balance na yon is 21, 331, 175.
Magtatali din tayo, kasi ito ay, um, okay. If you subtract, magtatali din tayo, kasi from the 28, halimbawa, you subtract... Hindi talaga tayo magtatali, madam speaker. Um, ang running balance dito is 10 billion, sorry, 14... Running balance as of December is 14 billion, pero ang reported here is 21 billion. So may discrepancy ng 7 billion printed. So maybe we will...
Yun 'yung, madam speaker, kaya tayo nagkagulo nung DICT hearing, kasi nga sa akin naman, ano bang actual deposited? Nung, nung, wala pa tayo dun, ha? Magkano bang nasa Bureau of Treasury? Kung dun pa lang sa balanse, di na tayo magkatali, magkano na 'yung deposited sa Bureau of Treasury kaya for DICT? And the ledger, like you said, we have different ledgers? So in the ledger, how much is in the Bureau of Treasury of the DICT ledger in as far as the spectrum users fees is concerned?
Okay, so, madam speaker, um... So the reason for, let me just, so I just received info that, uh... The discrepancy between what would be printed here in the BASF and what the Bureau of Treasury would, would have is that hindi kasama sa pagaccount ng Treasury dito, 'yung ibang releases ng agency. So kailangan ng reconciliation, further reconciliation, katulad nung ginawa natin with the HEDF. Okay, so mas tama siguro.
Madam speaker, is that even acceptable to you, madam sponsor?
Mas tama ang BAS, ha? So, so in short, mas mas, mas correct ang BASF.
'Yung 21?
Yes, mas, mas tama itong, uh, 21 billion.
Pero, madam speaker, magkano 'yung nakadepósito? Kasi, kaya ko lang naman to tinatanong, because nanggaling mismo sa Bureau of Treasury, na 4 billion na lang ang balanse niya as of her record.
So, so what is deposited as of today? Okay, so ang, uh, what can be made available by the Treasury for this particular account is 15 billion, 237 million, 332,874, as I had, um, indicated earlier.
So for the meantime, nasaan 'yung 21 minus 15? Because if the deposited is 15 billion and our balance is 21 billion, asan 'yung balanse ng 21 minus 15? Nasaan 'yung 6? Saan ba muna dumideposit? Siguro, madam speaker, para malinawan ko, um, pag nagpasok ng spectrum users fee si Globe, si Smart, saan po ba dumideposito yun?
So those are still to be reflected, because they need BTR certifications, which are forthcoming.
So for the meantime, madam speaker...
So, kumbaga, kumbaga sa cheque, in transit pa. So to, they, they are in the process of reconciliation.
Uh, madam speaker...
So, so what, what we can do is, they can submit a report for the balance of that 6 billion. So, so right now, um, DBM should be able to account for that 6 billion. So they're telling us that they have 6 billion worth of, um, releases na wala pang BTR certification. So 'yan ang isasubmit sa inyo, the report.
Releases or income? Kasi kung releases, di mababawasan pa 'yung 15B. Because if you're saying that the balance is 15B and there are releases na unaccounted na 6B, itipagby minus ko yun.
Income.
Income?
Yes.
Okay. Now, saan ba na unang nade-deposito 'yung iniintregan na SUF? I just really want to understand. I just really want to understand the earmark revenues. Once nagremit si Smart, si Globe ng SUF, saang account siya pumupunta? Saan siya nade-deposito?
So it goes to the Treasury? It, it goes to the Treasury?
So if it goes to the Treasury, bakit wala... Hindi ko... Sorry, Madam Speaker, hindi ko alam kung naiintindihan mo 'yung point ko. If it goes to the Treasury, bakit nawawalan 'yung 6 billion kung nakadeposito lang siya dun?
No, it, it is...
I mean, bakit kaila... I mean, diba? Very simple lang naman ang deposit eh. Pag nagdeposit ka, does it take one year to account for... This is 2022. 2022 revenue is 6 billion. Does it take a year to be reflected in our Bureau of Treasury? Because 'yung sinasabi nating 6 billion, that's 6.727474 revenues, actual revenues that came in in 2022. So if that was deposited in the Bureau of Treasury, bakit sa sabihin niyo sa amin na hindi siya reflected?
Pero, pero nasa account na nila, pero hindi pa kayo... Pero hindi pa kayo nag...
Kasi, Madam Speaker, Madam Sponsor, 2022 pa'to, wala pa po 'yung 2023.
So, so what happens is the following. When, when the cash comes in, um, we, we are aggressive in terms of collection. It goes directly to the account of the Treasury, right? So it is there. Um, aggressive ang DBM sa pag-account. So nandito kaagad sa BASF. However, for some reason, mas mabagal tayo sa pag-certify na... Ang... Medyo mas mabagal si Treasury na mag-certify na nandun na ang pera dun sa account. Therefore, 15 billion lang ang naka-indicate na balance dito sa Treasury, when in, in fact, it's actually 21 billion.
Wala bang magiging implication yun sa paggamit natin ng pera? I mean, every time, we need money. So parang pag hindi mo yun nire-reflect dun, then para tayong laging may kulang?
Well, in a sense, um, because remember, um, when we want to, for example, pass a supplemental budget, um, a requirement is a certification from the Treasury that, from the treasurer that, um, funds are available, right? So kunwari, halimbawa, kinailangan natin, halimbawa ngayon, ng certification that we need 6 billion. Eh, alam naman natin, in, in reality, na merong 6 billion dyan. However, medyo mabagal tayo at hindi tayo nakapag-issue. Yun ang problema, right?
Madam Speaker, is this acceptable? One year? Kaya Madam Sponsor? Kasi kayo po ang natsal... I think...
Yes.
Ano po ang efficiency level dapat natin doon?
This is something, Madam Speaker, that clearly we need to work on together. Yes, I, I believe that this is something... This is something... Yes, there is definitely scope for improvement in terms of, um, operations, um, Treasury operations.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. Kasi we're not even talking about 2023 na may 6 billion na namang papasok. So, uh, Madam Speaker, I'd like to put on record, maybe the DBCC family or DBM or Bureau of Treasury should do something about this kasi cause for panic to sa atin pagka kunwari, sasabihin ng Bureau of Treasury, ito na lang ang pera. So paghihingi ng pera ngayon sa agency, sasabihin, ay, wala na kami pwedeng... Because that's precisely what was answered to us. Wala na kami pwedeng maibigay sa inyo kasi 4 billion na lang ang pera dito. Siyempre tayo bilang mamabatas, paano nagkakaganon when we have... We know for a fact kung ano 'yung amount na yun. Anyway... Okay, nasa earmark palang tayo na Madam Speaker, but 'yung po hinihingi ko po sana like last year na how do we now intend to make more use of our earmark revenues? Kasi sayang po siya. Can I still continue? Pwede pa ba? Okay, can I? Okay, thanks. My next is, um, sa off-budget accounts. Yung off-budget account is deposited in each agency, is that correct?
Yeah, yes. Either in an authorized depository account or the Treasury.
Um, sino nagma-manage ng off-budget account? Is it per agency or the Bureau of Treasury?
Per agency.
Super-agency. So bawat pera nun, ang interest income nun, per agency rin or sa national government?
Again, it goes to the national government based on the Admin Code of 1987.
So pag off-budget, nakadeposito siya sa each account ng each agency? But the interest, pag pumasok dun, ireremit sa national government?
Yes, that is correct.
Honorable Bernadette Terrera, if you can wind up your question. Thank you.
Um, meron pa naman ako next. Nakapila pa ako ulit sa NEDA and ano, ano. Okay, anyway, siguro wind up na lang ako. I would like to ask the, the opinion of the DBCC family of what they think of the one-fund concept. That's why I was just discussing this. Because during the time of President Marcos, siya na'y nagsimula nung one-fund concept in a sense, wherein lahat nung mga 'yan, off-budget, nakakalat, 'yung off-budget natin is total 133 billion, earmark revenues natin 688 billion, meron tayong mga unused appropriation na 200 billion. So pag pinagsama-sama kasi natin to, just like what, um, President Marcos did, President Ramos did, President Corey did, napapakinabangan kaagad ito into a one-fund concept na pwedeng nababawasan 'yung utang natin. May I know kung anong sentiments of this administration when it comes to that?
Well, yes, um, the DBCC family expresses a strong preference for this, uh, one-fund, uh... One-fund, one, uh, one-fund concept. Again, um, this is, uh, a way so that, um, they can rationalize, uh, they can better rationalize spending. Ang hirap kasi kung, uh, iba-iba ang nagde-desisyon sa pag-gastos ng pera. So kung 316 tayo dito, 316 ang, uh, filosofiya ng, uh, pag-gastos, um, nalulusaw ang, uh, ang, uh, ang ating, um, ang ating, uh, economic philosophy, kumbaga. So at least, um, if there's just, uh, one fund, madaling ipatupad ang ating medium-term fiscal framework, for example.
So is this, um, something that is being considered right now?
Well, it has always been in place, of course. But, uh, but then, of course, um, Congress, uh... They, they, of course, always yield to the wisdom of Congress. Every time we pass laws where there's earmarking, um, and we ask them to appear before us and, uh, we ask them for their opinion, they always politely say, "We yield to the wisdom of Congress", even if deep inside them, they, of course, um, have the, this preference for the one-fund concept.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd just like to put that on record so that, uh, my fellow, my colleagues also would hear that. Because like, katulad 'yung nangyari niyan, we have 688 billion in earmark revenues, 133 billion in off-budget, then we have GOCs na nagbibigay ng pondo, then we have unused appropriation. Kung nasa isang pondo siya, mas nababawasin 'yung inuutang natin sa labas ng bansa eh. So maybe it is something also that we could look at here in, here in the House of Representatives. But anyway, I'll just reserve for the, for the other agencies, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Representative Edsel C. Lagman of the First District of Albay to interpolate on the general principles and provisions.
The Honorable Edsel Lagman is recognized for his interpolation.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, will the distinguished, uh, lady yield to some clarificatory questions?
Yes, absolutely. It is my honor and privilege, Madam Speaker.
Does the House of Representatives have a policy on the appropriation of confidential and intelligence funds with respect to the agency's entitlement as well as the requisite amount to be appropriated?
No, no, Madam Speaker.
If there is no policy, is there a need to formulate that policy considering the level of confidential and intelligence funds being requested by government agencies to the tune of about 10.2 billion for 2024?
Well, Madam Speaker, uh, at this point in time, perhaps, uh, that can be considered. Uh, ang dami pong nagtatangong sa atin kung ano ba talaga ang dahilan, kung bakit kailangan, kung, uh, bakit may mga ahensya na biglang nagsilakihan, ano ba talaga ang patakaran, uh, ano ba talaga ang pamamaraan, kung paano iaudit, kailangan ba mag-submit ng resibo, sino ba dapat ang tumitingin sa mga report? Napakarami pong tanong. So, paka po, Madam Speaker, panahon na para i-review ng Kongreso ang mga patakaran pagdating po sa confidential and intelligence funds. So ako, Madam Speaker, it's probably time that, uh, we can consider reviewing the policy, Madam Speaker.
And it is opportune that we are now deliberating on the proposed budget for 2024 that we formulate. The Committee on Appropriations should initiate the formulation of policies regarding, uh, agencies who are not or are entitled and the amount to be given to these agencies. Would the distinguished, uh, sponsor spearhead in the Committee on Appropriations for submission to the House and to be reflected in the General Appropriations Bill on these particular issues?
Madam Speaker, um, that is a very tall order. Um, I don't think, uh, I have the, um, competency for that. Uh, I, uh, would leave it to the leadership to decide on that matter, Madam Speaker.
Uh, I will initiate some, uh, changes on the appropriation of, uh, the CIF and entitlement of some agencies. And I hope this initiative will be considered by the leadership of the Committee on Appropriations. Uh, Madam Speaker, Vice President Sarah Duterte said that she defers to the collective wisdom of the majority on her request for confidential funds. Thus, she is shifting the unos or responsibility to the Congress, particularly her request for confidential funds. Does the distinguished sponsor agree that her statement deferring to the collective wisdom of the majority effectively shifted the unos or responsibility of the CIF to the House of Representatives? Madam Speaker, distinguished lady, can we get your comment on this?
But, Madam Speaker, rightfully so, because I believe that Congress has the power of the purse. At the end of the day, we decide on appropriations, Madam Speaker.
In other words, the requesting agency who defers to the collective wisdom of the majority will, uh, really shift the responsibility to the Congress because we have the final say on the appropriation of CIF. Is that correct?
I believe so, Madam Speaker.
And, uh, I hope that we could, uh, responsibly respond to the shifting of unos and we decide properly, legally, and accurately the amount to be appropriated to requesting agencies and whether the requesting agencies are entitled to CIF pursuant to the respective mandates. Now, next question. To what items of expenditure can the contingent fund be utilized?
Madam Speaker, it is to... Hold on. It is to... Any... Any item? Any item? It is for any item as long as it is for a new or urgent activity or project of national government agencies, GOCs, and LGUs that need to be implemented or paid during the year.
Madam Speaker, distinguished, uh, sponsor, the General Appropriations Act has a special provision on the utilization of contingent fund. It, uh, provides, among others, that the contingent fund shall be utilized for obligations of the government arising from final and executive decisions of competent authorities, such as compromise agreement, arbitral awards, mediation settlement agreement, and professional services in connection therewith, two, requests of newly created office, or, and three, deficiencies in the appropriations for local and external travel of the Office of the President. To my mind, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, any other utilization should be aligned to the three specific expenditures to be funded by the contingent fund. In order, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, that there will be no circumstances wherein the contingent fund is, uh, released to agencies which are not involved. are not involved in the three specific instances, then we must be able to constrict in the 2024 provision, the utilization of the contingent fund. Would you agree, Madam Speaker, Madam Sponsor, to venture on creating a amended provision in order to further constrict the utilization of contingent fund for contingency purposes?
Madam Speaker, I would, with due respect, disagree. My understanding is that it is very clear that the use of the contingent fund is that it is so long as it is for a new or urgent activity or project of national government agencies, GOCs and LGUs that need to be implemented or paid during the year, such as but not limited to the following: one, legal obligation of the government arising from the final and executive decisions of competent authorities, such as compromise agreements, arbitral awards, mediation settlement agreement, and professional services in connection thereto; number two, requirements of newly created offices; or three, deficiencies in appropriations for local and external travels of the President of the Philippines. So there are three illustrative cases, but it is very clear that it is not limited to these three cases. So, there is a broad application of this contingent fund. And precisely, the purpose is it is to be used for a contingency. And it is very clear in Belica versus Adsoa that that is the purpose for the fund. And the case upholds the constitutionality of the fund. It is very clear that the Supreme Court recognizes that it is really impossible for Congress to anticipate two years in advance all the needs of government. And so therefore allows the existence of such a fund and allows this kind of a mechanism. And so long as there is a specific appropriation and that there there is a special provision that specifies how such appropriation is to be used, which I just read earlier, then there is a valid delegation of Congress to the executive, Madam Speaker.
Well, it is true that Congress cannot anticipate certain circumstances which would need funding. That is why we have created the contingent fund. But this has been abused. Madam Speaker, distinguished lady, you would recall that during the time of President Duterte, the contingent fund was used for the construction of a resort. So, again, we have now the controversy of the contingent fund being used to answer the request of the Vice President for additional funds in her office to the tune of about 125 million. In order to foreclose this proliferation on the utilization of the contingent fund, I am proposing that it is opportune for us now to delimit strictly the utilization of these contingent funds. My last issue, Madam Speaker, distinguished lady, is there a need to amend the Joint Circular Number 2015-01 to make the utilization and reporting of CIF be more transparent for purposes of accountability?
Madam Speaker, may I ask the distinguished gentleman in what way he wants it amended?
Well, we could provide for a special or general provision on the utilization and reporting of confidential of the utilization of Confidential Intelligence Fund in the General Appropriations Bill to make the utilization and reporting more transparent for purposes of holding agencies accountable for the use of Confidential Intelligence Funds. Congress can do that through the General Appropriations Bill, considering that this circular is only an administrative fire. What is your response, Madam Sponsor?
Madam Speaker, I agree to better audit and increase transparency for these funds. But perhaps but exactly how to increase the transparency needs to be talked about further. At this point, it's not it's not clear to all of us how that can happen. So, maybe, for example, do we create, for example, an oversight committee for Confidential Intelligence Funds? I mean, that's one possibility. Again, there are other possibilities. So, that is something that perhaps can be further discussed, Madam Speaker.
May we know whether the distinguished lady is happy with the Joint Circular Number 2015-01?
Madam Speaker, it can certainly be further improved.
And that is why I am proposing that in the General Appropriations Bill, we provide strict reporting requirements for purposes of transparency in the utilization of Confidential and Intelligence Fund. And have remedial provisions on the Joint Circular Number 2015-01. And I understand the distinguished lady is amenable in making these steps in the General Appropriations Bill.
Yes, Madam Speaker, we certainly can consider these amendments. We may discuss all of these during the period of amendments. And I certainly hope that the good gentleman Congressman Adso Lagman can guide us, and I will certainly support his initiatives.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, distinguished sponsor, for giving me the opportunity to interpolate. Thank you.
Thank you, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Representative Paul Ardaza of the First District of Northern Samar to interpolate on the general principles and provisions.
The Honorable Paul Ardaza is recognized for his interpolation.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Would the good sponsor yield to a few questions?
Oh, sorry. Yes.
Okay, Madam Speaker, will the is the sponsor ready for a few questions?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. At the onset, Madam Speaker, allow me to join the Honorable Lagman and the Honorable Kimbo in their agreement to possibly include a provision in the 2024 GAA that will possibly augment the guidelines set forth by the Joint Circular that addresses Confidential Intelligence Funds. From listening to the discourse earlier, I think there was some sort of meeting of the minds, and I hope the Committee on Appropriations will pursue that and this representation will join a provision that will address the CIF funds. Madam Speaker, last year, we approved the proposed medium-term fiscal framework as proposed by the executive branch. My first question is, I would like to ask the DBCC what essentially have been the challenges in terms of meeting that medium-term fiscal framework, which I personally thought was reasonable, was a good roadmap. It set forth certain targets, goals, guidelines. So, for the information of the House, what in the past year has been the most challenging aspect of reaching the MTFF?
Number one is inflation, Madam Speaker. As you know, well, first, we had a problem with onion prices. In 2022, by December of 2022, a kilo of onions reached about 800 pesos. And now, the problem is rice. And as you know, of course, rice is is the most important commodity in every Filipino family. So, and that's the most important driver of inflation. So that's the biggest challenge at the moment. And in fact, the inflation target for this year, which is a maximum of 4%, that is going to be a that's going to be tough. So we are we are likely not going to meet that or and or so unless, unless, of course, supply shocks are going to return to like August levels, then that's the only chance that we are going to hit the 4% mark. And the second challenge is GDP growth. The target is 6%, but our Q our second quarter GDP growth was only 4.3%. So, and the reason for that is a reduction in government spending. So there's a big catch-up that we need to do in terms of government spending.
Madam Speaker, I thank the sponsor for accepting and recognizing the challenges that we're facing today, inflation and GDP growth, which I think is a good start that that the DBCC recognizes us as major problems. My understanding is the target was 2% to 4% inflation, but the actual inflation now, I think, is maybe closer to 5%, if I'm not mistaken. GDP target was 6.5% to 8% under the MTFF and were a little lower than the targets. So my question is, inflation really affects more the poorer sector of society. The well-to-do, by definition, are not so affected because they have the spending power. So in the 2024 budget, how did the DBCC calibrate the expenditure program to take into account that inflation has been a problem and it affects the lower-income families? Would the sponsor share what strategies the DBCC had to address that particular concern?
Yes, for inflation, the key really is to make sure that we have enough food supply. So, as you know, beginning 2022, one of the biggest increases in our budget is the DA. So for 2024, the DA continues to have one of the biggest budgets. So, that's one. Number two, we, DSWD, continues to have one of the the top, the biggest budgets as well. And there is also DSWD Ayuda Programs is also one of those that had big increases, particularly AIX. And in terms of growth, infrastructure is, we we still have infrastructure at 5% of GDP. And as you know, infrastructure has a big multiplier. It is estimated at 3, meaning for every 1 peso that you put into an infrastructure project, you get an impact of 3 pesos in GDP. So, and of course, we have investments in human capital. So, we have education as well as training programs like TESDA, for example. So, and as you know, of course, education has the biggest chunk of our national budget.
Would the good sponsor remember what the increase? Because one of the related to inflation and one of the macroeconomic agenda of the government is social protection, health, and reducing energy costs to families. So, what in the 24 budget increased to address that? Even just an estimate, was there a substantial increase for social protection, healthcare, education in the 2024 budget?
For social protection? For social protection, we have 4P's, which has an allocated 112 billion pesos.
Madam Speaker, I don't need the details. I just, I think it'd be good for the sponsor to share to the House if there were any increases from year to year on, in general, for social protection, whether it's 4P's, social pension, and other related direct subsidies to the poorer sector of our society. I'm thinking, I'm sure DBM would have that statistics.
So, so in, in general, our strategy for social protection has not changed significantly from last year. It continues to be 4P, social pension, for seniors, field health.
Okay, Madam Speaker, well, allow me to thank the sponsor and the DBM.
We have, one, one significant change is for feeding programs. We had doubled the number of days of our school-based feeding programs. I think that's one significant change for the 2024 budget.
Okay, I thank the sponsor.
And also for, sorry, and also for our social pension for senior citizens. We effectively doubled it because last year, half of it was in unprogrammed appropriations. And now, the entire amount, which is 49.8 billion pesos, is entirely unprogrammed.
Yeah, allow me to thank you and the DBM for doing that, especially on the feeding program, augmenting the budget, and doubling the social pension for 2024, as promised by no less than the DBM Secretary. Thank you, that, I think, helps, even though in a little way, on a macro level, it helps many poor families and many poorer areas. So I hope that the Committee on Appropriations will not touch those budgets down the road. Can we get that assurance that, she herself said inflation has been a big issue, a concern, and it affects the poorer sector of society. So I hope those NEP allocations will not be reduced, and in fact, if they're touched, they're augmented. Would the sponsor feel the same way?
Yes, absolutely. There is commitment from the DBCC that all those social protection programs will be, at the very least, maintained, if not expanded in the future.
Thank you to my distinguished colleague. And I hope that will include education allocation. Because I'm personally concerned, I think no less than the Secretary of Finance had made statements about the free tuition law and the CHED subsidies. I hope the DBCC and the good sponsor will continue to advocate continued funding for free college tuition and the other programs that's embedded in Republic Act 10931. Would you share the same sentiment, Madam Speaker?
Yes, absolutely. There, there is strong commitment from the DBCC that we will support the law on free college education. And we will make sure that we will have sufficient funds to support that law. It is very important for our youth to have continued access to free college education. Importante yan para sa kinabukasan ng ating kabataan, Madam Speaker.
Thank you so much for the assurances Jasmine. Now, to continue on the macro level, I'm interested if our cost of borrowing has increased this year compared to pre-pandemic? Because of the global turmoil, has our general cost of borrowing increased? I know that our credit rating is still stable, which is good for all of us. But has it changed since pre-pandemic levels?
From, Madam Speaker, from December 2022? Or would you want to see the figures from pre-pandemic? From pre-pandemic, average cost of borrowing was 5%. It actually dropped to 4.95 today, July 2023. Good news.
Okay.
You should be jumping up and down.
Yeah, that's good news.
Okay, but let me just explain. It, it actually dropped to 3.86 at the height of the pandemic. So that was December 2021. It rose to 4.95 recently because of the increase in policy rates. But that's a global phenomenon. But again, just for context, it is lower than the 5% levels pre-pandemic. So we, it's actually good.
Well, okay, that's good to hear. But it seems like, when I was listening to the interpolation earlier by the Honorable Bordado, our revenue to borrowing mix to fund our 2024 budget is basically 57%, 43%. From what I recall, the deficit spending or the borrowing seems to have increased. So I assume that that's due to lower revenue. Would that be the bigger picture? And that's why we seem to, we seem to have a bigger deficit spending? Could you enlighten us on that?
Well, it's, we're actually, the deficit is actually growing smaller over the years.
Oh, has it? On a, at least on a percentage level?
Yes, that is correct.
May I ask, let's say in 2019 or 2018, what percentage of the annual budget then was subsidized by borrowings?
This is what I cited?
Yeah, 0.1.
Okay, so in, in 2020? So in 2022?
Or is it 2019 before pandemic?
2019, this is pre-pandemic. It was 3.4%. But of course, remember, during the pandemic, we had to borrow a lot. So pandemic years, it shot up to 7.6%. And then, at the peak, went up to 8.6%.
Madam Speaker, with the indulgence of the sponsor, my question was, what percentage of the budget then was financed, funded by borrowings? Because for 2024, it came out that borrowing subsidizes 43% of the 5.7 trillion. So for the Filipino public, it's good for everyone to realize that for every 1 peso that we spend, whether it's DOH, DPWH, CHED, 43% is actually from borrowed funds. So I wanted to relate that and see what the mix was before the pandemic.
This is the correct number, Madam Speaker. The, these are the correct numbers. This is the percent, percentage of the GDP.
No, no.
This is the percent of, sorry, of the spending that would be financed by borrowings.
Yes.
So those are the numbers that I cited.
Could you repeat that again?
In 2019, pre-pandemic, it was 3.4%. And then...
Okay, we'll stop at 2019. I doubt that figure, but you're saying that our deficit spending has gone up from 3% of the total budget to 43% 2024 in a matter of five years? I, I have reservations on that number.
So you want expenditures minus revenues as a percent of revenues? As a percent of, you want expenditures minus revenues as a percent of?
So, 2019 budget, what percent of that was funded for, from revenues? And what percent was funded by borrowings? So it's apples to apples. Because for 2024, it was noted that it's a 57% from local revenue and 43% from borrowing. So my question was, what was the percentage just before the pandemic? Let's say 2019?
Okay, Madam Speaker, so as not to waste the time of the Honorable Ardaza, may we have a two-minute suspension? So I can compute for the...
Session suspended. Madam Speaker, session resumed. The Honorable Stella Kimbo, please proceed.
Madam Speaker, in 2019, borrowings financed 17.4% of our total budget. By 2022, it was 31%. By 2023, it went up to 32%. But by 2024, it will go down to 24.1%.
Madam Speaker, thank you for that information. And the reason I ask that is I think all of us should understand and appreciate, and the public, that for every peso of expenditure for whatever department, a large portion is actually from borrowed funds. So my question is, based on the priorities of the executive branch, there are many priorities: social protection, infrastructure, health, agriculture. What has happened to some of the cost mitigation programs of the executive branch, like the right sizing or other programs? To make sure that we're really maximizing the expenditure program for the good of the common Filipino and to, also, from a macro point of view, we're pump priming and hopefully get our GDP targets?
Madam Speaker, right sizing is one of the LEDAC priorities. We have actually passed the bill, but it is still pending at the Senate. So that's the situation. Of course, the DBM wants it passed into law. They, like you, they are frustrated. They want it, yes, they, 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 like you, they want to see the cost savings. They want to, to realize those cost savings as soon as we can. But, but again, right sizing really doesn't mean the loss of jobs, right? It's actually right sizing, right? So there might be some jobs, some positions to be added, but certainly, some, some positions which are obsolete to be, to be taken away. So, you know, in the end, the, the hope is that there are efficiency gains to be had.
Okay, I appreciate the response. I think there is a lot of effort from the executive branch on addressing those. from the executive branch on addressing those. And because my time is winding up, let me ask the DBCC or any member of the DBCC. They set forth the Budget Expenditure Program for the year, which is 5.7. They go through the budget call and they come up with the President's proposed budget, 2024. They submit it to us. It goes through Appropriations Committee and Finance Senate. My question is, does the DBCC or any department within the DBCC track the progress of the National Expenditure Program and the other parts of it from the House to the Senate to the BiCam and then after BiCam? I guess my question is, do they advise the President? When we finally submit the final General Appropriations Bill, the final version after the BiCam, does the DBCC actually go through that and make recommendations to the President?
Well, Madam Speaker, there is a separation of powers. So once they submit the budget to us, it is with us and there is no visibility from then on.
Madam Speaker, I'm referring to the President has a constitutional right or privilege to do line veto items, to veto certain parts of the proposed budget as submitted by the House and the Senate. So I'm just interested in the process, who within the executive branch will actually go through the final version and make suggestions, recommendations to the opposite of President? Good.
So, it's the DBM in consultation with the Office of the Executive Secretary that reviews the final version for purposes of the possible veto of particular line items.
And the sponsor does agree that the President does have the power to do line item vetoes?
Absolutely, Madam Speaker.
Okay, so, for example, in the 2023 budget, I'm sure the DBCC, the DBM, and all the agents feel strongly about their budget proposal. Did the DBM, let's say for 2023, do a macro analysis on how much total, without talking details, total were realigned from whatever department to others? And how did they go through the thought process on what to recommend to the President that the President should veto or not? Could the sponsor share a little bit about how DBM does the analysis?
Madam Speaker, realignments are generally respected unless there is no legal basis for such realignments.
Could the sponsor share what the 2023 total realignment was? If the DBM did the budget analysis from the NEP as submitted to the final version?
With your kind indulgence, I will have to pick up the document to...
Thank you.
Two-minute suspension, Madam Speaker. Session suspended.
Session resumed. Please proceed.
Total realignments for 2023 GAA amount to 447 billion, 251 million, 207...
That's billion, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that information. So, my question is, to what extent... Because the executive branch has a MTFF, you have a macroeconomic agenda. And if, to what extent is bearable? Or, I appreciate that the sponsor said they respect the power of the House, of Congress, power of the purse. But to what extent is acceptable? How is the decision made? What to recommend to the President or not? Just give us a taste of... Because eventually, we're gonna have a BiCam and then there are many realignments. So I'm interested in the thought process and the procedures that happen behind the scenes with the executive branch. Thank you for sharing that. That's a large amount. Share us some of your thoughts on the involvement of the DBM and the other offices when they scrutinize the final version of the General Appropriations Bill?
Madam Speaker, generally, the DBCC, executive in general, they respect the changes introduced by Congress during the BiCam. That's a general rule that they adopt. And it's really just only those that they find unconstitutional that they recommend for line item veto to the President.
Okay, I know it's a hard question to answer, but... Well, let me ask again. If there's a general rule, would there be exceptions to that general rule?
So, in effect, Madam Speaker, the alignment with the MTFF happens at the NEP level. So when they come to us, when they present the NEP to us, they make sure that that is consistent with the MTFF. So, whatever changes that they introduce during the BiCam, then that is up to us. And then, so what they see after the BiCam, they generally respect. And everything else is really just, just a, in effect, a legal assessment. At that point in time, it's beyond the MTFF, so to speak, Madam Speaker.
Okay, thank you, Madam Speaker. I'll list for second round. I actually have two, three more topics. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Franz Castro of Act Teachers' Party List to interpolate on the general principles and provisions.
The Honorable Franz Castro is recognized for interpolation.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Would the good sponsor yield to some of my questions?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On my first topic is about the salaries and benefits of our teachers and our government employees. So, 'yung unang tanong ko, ma'am, Madam Speaker, ay siguro answerable by yes or no. So, sa 2024 ba, makakaasa ang ating mga teachers and government employees ng salary increase?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor. So dun sa huling interpolation natin ano, dun sa briefing ng DBCC, binanggit ng ating, ng DBM about the study of the compensation and position classification system. At sinasabi nila na ano daw, ano, na matata... undergoing yung procurement and they said they are able to provide reso... They will be able to provide results of the study by October. Mangayari ba ito, ah, Madam Speaker? Tama ba ito o hindi?
Madam Speaker, unfortunately nagkaroon ng failure sa bidding and therefore, magkakaroon po ng negotiated procurement? In which case, magkakaroon po ng kaunting delay sa ating pag-aaral.
So, sinasabi din ng DBM, Madam Speaker, na yuung salary increase ay magaganap, ano, siyempre, mag-aapprove tayo ng budget before 2024. So kailangan ma-reflect na doon. So kung magkakaroon ng delay ng procurement na ito, kasi October, ngayon ay September, ano, na to... Ngayon po ay September 19, October, 'yung inaasahan nating result ng study. At magkakaroon ng ano, no? So November, December, maipapasa na 'yung batas ng, or hopefully, 'yung gaat 2024. So maihabol ba ito doon sa 2024 budget? Kasi ang sagot kanina, magkakaroon talaga ng salary increase. Pero nakadepende, Madam Speaker, ang salary increase doon sa binanggit kong study kanina. So do you think magkakaroon pa kayo ng enough time on our, dito sa budget natin, sa seasonal budget natin, on budget season para ma-effect 'yung sinasabing salary increase?
If ever naman po na magkaroon ng delay, pwede naman pong gawing retroactive. So meron naman pong commitment na makukuha po nila ang buong salary increase na pinamis po sa kanila.
Okay, so ilang buwan natin makikita 'yung delay? Ilang may araw ba? May weeks? 'Yung delay ng procurement ng study?
Kapag matuloy po ang negotiated procurement po by October, by December po natin makukuha ang results ng pag-aaral, Madam Speaker.
So maihabol pa natin 'yan?
Tama po, Madam Speaker.
Okay, thank you. So yun lang 'yung gusto natin. So may binanggit na 16.95 billion and another 70 billion na manggagaling sa 93.9 billion. At binanggit din ang DBM last time, Madam Speaker, na itong 16.9 billion is from salary adjustment at itong 70 billion ay from personal benefit. So, um... Do you agree on that? Tama po ba ito 'yung panggagalingan noong pino-proposed nating salary increase?
Tama po.
Tama po ba? Yun ang panggagalingan? Kasi binanggit po ng DBM last time, merong 16.9 salary adjustment at 'yung 70 billion na personal benefits. So sinabi rin ng DBM, kung hindi ako nagkakamali, may 2.2 to 8% na salary increase by next year. Tama po ba ito?
Tama po.
Okay, thank you, Madam Speaker. So, um... So yun, okay na po. Baka pwede pa ring magkaroon ng ano, no? Magkaroon ng other sources of income or other sources for salary increase. Ah well, itong 93.9 billion na binabanggit natin kanina, nagaling din naman ito doon sa NEP. Ano po ba ang komposisyon itong 93.5... Ah, 93.9 billion? Maliban doon sa 70 billion? From 93.9 billion? Madam Speaker, I hope hindi nababawasan 'yung time ko kapag tatangong, no? Kasi marami po.
So the funding requirements? So ang tanong po is, ano ang funding requirements for the 93.8 billion?
Um, Madam Speaker, binanggit kasi, noon nakaraang budget briefing sa DBCC, merong 93... merong 93.9 billion. Dito mang gagaling 'yung sinasabi natin na binanggit din ang DBM na 70 billion personal benefits. So ano pa po ba 'yung other 23.9 billion? Kasama ba ito doon sa pwedeng ma-eearmark for salary increase?
Okay, so ito po, ito po ang breakdown. Ang increase in uniform and, ano 'yung see, clothing allowance is 1.368 billion. An increase in rata is 619 million. Ang staffing modifications and upgrading of salaries is 3.98 billion. Ang salary adjustment and other compensation is 87.9 billion. So the total is 93.89 billion.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Speaker and distinguished sponsor. So nakuha na natin 'yung 93.9 billion. So malinaw, Madam Speaker, na meron doong increase ng rata, kasi 'yan din 'yung gusto sa atin ng, ano, no, gusto po ng mga education support personnel, especially 'yung mga principals at saka 'yung mga supervisors. 3.98 billion na earmark for other benefits. At ang mahalaga, Mr. Speaker, ay Madam Speaker, at ito po ay ikinatutuwa ng representasyong ito na magkakaroon ng increase na 1,000 doon sa clothing allowance. Dito po ako natutuwa, no? Aside from, merong nilalaang budget, ang DBM para sa salary increase na more or less 8% ay nadagdagan pa 'yung uniform and clothing allowance ng 1,000. So ang ibig sabihin, ah Madam Speaker, from 6,000 pesos na clothing and uniform allowance, based on Section 54 of our NEP, ay magiging 7,000 na ito. Tama po ba?
Tama po.
Yes, so isa na pong, ano, natin'to, no? Isa pong tagumpay natin ito, Madam Speaker, dito sa at, sa kongreso, dahil matagal na po natin itong pino-proposed. Actually nga, ang proposal ng kinatawang ito ay 10,000 na clothing and uniform allowance. But 1,000 is increase, ay matutuwa na po ang ating mga government employees plus the salary increase. Okay, next, ah Madam Speaker, puntan na po ako doon sa another topic ko on the confidential funds. So Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, my questions will be on the general provisions on the 2022 GAA and the 2024 GAA, about confidential funds on the, ano, no? Okay, so 'yun. So 'yung provision po ba ng confidential funds that is in the 22 budget, 2022 budget, is the same as in the provision for 2024 budget?
With respect to what, Madam Speaker?
Ang tanong ko, number one, una, 'yun po bang general provisions ng confidential funds ng 2022 ay the same text as in the confidential funds in the 2024 budget? Parehas lang po ba sila ng text? O may kaibahan? Parehas lang po ba ito? Or hindi? Kung hindi, ano po 'yung difference?
Madam Speaker, they are identical.
Okay. Thank you for that answer. So malinaw po, no, 'yung guidelines natin on confidential and intelligence funds na nakalagay sa general guidelines ng 2022 is the same as in the 2024 budget, okay? So according to the Joint Circular Number 2015-01 on January 8, 2015, nakalagay po dito, no? Pwede niyo pang, ano, pwede niyo pang banggitin, ah Madam Speaker, ano ba 'yung subject nitong Joint Circular 2015-01 on January 8, 2015?
Banggitin ang?
Pwede bang, ah Madam Speaker, banggitin ating distinguished sponsor, ano itong Joint Circular Number 2015?
Guidelines on the entitlement, release, use, reporting, and audit of confidential and/or intelligence funds, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So kung titignan natin sa general guidelines nitong JC 2015-1, who are entitled to CF and/or intelligence fund?
Madam Speaker, NGAs, which are expressly provided, budget allocation for CF and/or IF under the GAA and/or other laws, GOCs as provided in their COBs, and respect only to CF as may be expressly authorized by the GCG under RA Number 10149 and by the DBM for all other GOCs and LGUs whose peace and order is a priority concern and which have duly allocated CF but not IF in their annual appropriation ordinance as provided that specific amount for POP is included in their peace and order and public safety plan and provided further, there is a specific appropriation for POP in their annual budget that the computation of allowable CF of an LGU shall be based on the budget of the LGU's POP only, Madam Speaker.
Yes, thank you, distinguished sponsor, Madam Speaker. So in that general provision, who are entitled to CF and IF? So do we agree that the NGAs with expressly provided budget allocations are only entitled to CF or IF?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Okay, pag sinabi nating expressly provided budget allocation, ibig sabihin, meron po siyang amount?
Tama po, Madam Speaker.
Sinasabi din natin na hindi amount, 'yung zero, kasi hindi siya expressly provided for doon sa, expressly provided for budget allocation. Ang tanong ko po, so hindi budget allocation ang zero?
Tama po.
Wala, okay, tama. So kung walang nakalagay, kasi napaka, ano naman, ano, maglalagay ka ng mga zero, zero, zero doon sa NEP. So hindi talaga, kung wala talaga ang expressly provided for budget allocations, hindi ito entitled. So ano po 'yung prinsipio behind that? Ang prinsipio behind that, sa atin po, sa kongreso, kaya natin, ano, kaya natin hinihigpitan itong CF, dahil, ah para lang mag, dahil ang kongreso lang, ang merong, ang merong karapatan o merong authorization na maglagay ng budget allocation for confidential fund. At kung gumastos ng CF ng wala naman sa GAA, ang ibig sabihin nito, Madam Speaker, ito ay unauthorized or unlawful obligation or expenditure. Tama po ba?
Sorry? Pakiulit po, Madam Speaker.
So kanina po ang sinabi ng ating, ng ating sponsor, Madam Speaker, based doon sa provisions or based doon sa guidelines na ang NGA which has expressly provided budget allocation for CF and CF. So mahalaga dito, Madam Speaker, na merong expressly provided for na budget. At ang zero ay hindi 'yun budget allocation. At hindi naman natin talaga nilalagayan, Madam Speaker. So ibig sabihin nito, pag gumastos ng CF, kahit wala sa GAA, ito ay unauthorized or unlawful obligation or expenditure. Tama o mali?
Kapag?
Kapag walang nakalagay, kapag walang nakalagay na expressly provided for sa budget allocation, okay, at wala ito doon sa GAA.
Tama po.
So ang paggastos nito ay unauthorized or unlawful obligation or expenditure.
Tama po.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker. So ang OVP ba in 2022, is it entitled for the confidential fund?
Tama po, Madam Speaker.
Is the OVP, ulitin ko ah, is the OVP entitled? Entitled po ba ang OVP ng confidential fund?
Madam Speaker, tama po, at uulitin ko, tama po. At ang dahilan po ay ganito po. Ang ginamit po dito ay ang contingent fund. In 2022, the contingent, in 2022.
Tinatanong ko lang.
In 2022, in 2022, Madam Speaker.
Tinatanong ko lang kanina ang entitled. Okay, so hindi ko na kailangan ng paliwanag. Okay, so tinatanong ko kanina, mismo Madam Speaker, kanina sinasabi natin, ah Madam Speaker, tinatanong ko lang, ang sagot po ay yes or no. So hindi naman po ako nag-aano ng paliwanag para doon. So sinasabi ang sagot nga, Madam Speaker, kanina, entitled ang OVP ng confidential fund in year 2022. So your answer is yes, okay? So Madam Speaker, may papakita pa ako, po akong PowerPoint, doon sa 2022 budget, kung paano natin sinasabi na may expressly provided for. So dito, sa 2022 na budget, may kita natin diyaan 'yung confidential, intelligence, and extraordinary expenses. So 'yan po 'yung parang pinakaheading, no? Under that, merong extraordinary and miscellaneous expense. Tama naman po 'yung ating sponsor, Madam Speaker, na wala diyaan, okay? Pero kung titignan natin 'yung 2023 na budget, ayan, budget for 2023 may confidential fund. So confidential, intelligence, and extraordinary expenses, confidential expenses, malinaw, 500 million, ay inaprubahan natin 'yung 2022. At meron ding extraordinary and miscellaneous expenses na 620,000, okay? So 'yung difference nung dalawa, Madam Speaker, here it is expressly provided for budgetary allocation. In 2022 ay wala. Tignan natin 'yung Office of the President. OP in 2022, Madam Speaker, may confidential fund at intelligence fund, okay? Under pa rin sa heading ng confidential, intelligence, and extraordinary expenses. Merong confidential, merong extraordinary miscellaneous expenses, at meron ding intelligence expenses na inaprubahan natin 'yung 2022. Okay, next, 'yung 2023 na budget ng OP, so ganun pa rin, the same pa rin, merong intelligence, merong extraordinary, merong confidential expenses. So ang ibig sabihin, ah Madam Speaker, based on our example, kung hindi siya expressly provided for budgetary allocation, wala, okay? Wala ang 2022 na confidential fund under the, under the vice pres, under the OVP. Tama po ba 'yun, Madam Speaker?
Madam Speaker, una sa lahat, one can force her opinion, but one cannot force her facts. Una sa lahat, maling bahagi ng libro ang tinitignan po ninyo. Maliwanag, nagdeklarah ang Supreme Court na ang contingent fund ay isang line item appropriation.
Madam Speaker, wala tayo doon sa contingent fund.
So ibig sabihin nun.
Hindi po natin pinag-uusapan dito.
Please allow the sponsor to finish her statement.
No, kasi po, Madam Speaker, ang tinatanong ko lang dito, kung meron o wala na expressly provided for. Wala pa po ako doon sa contingent fund.
At payagan niyo po kung ipaliwanag kung bakit meron. Ang problema po is, ayaw po natin makinig. Gusto ko po, Madam Speaker, ipaliwanag kung bakit.
Mas, naano po 'yung oras ko, Madam Speaker? Pinapatanong ka nga, kaya nga po, yes or no lang po eh, para mas mabilis. So kanina sinasabi natin.
Madam Speaker, payagan niyo po ako, Madam Speaker.
Session resumed. The Honorable Franz Castro to repeat her question, please.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, ah, Madam Speaker. So, 'yung tanong ko po kanina, kapag gumastos ng confidential fund, kahit wala sa GA, ito ay unauthorized or unlawful obligation or expenditure? Yes or no?
Honorable Stella Kimball.
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Okay, so dahil walang expressly provided for na budget allocation for CF in the OVP in 2022, so hindi entitled ang OVP sa confidential fund noong 2022?
Entitled po siya noong 2022, Madam Speaker.
So ano 'yung basis ng sinasabi ng ating distinguished speaker, distinguished sponsor, Madam Speaker, na entitled siya? Dahil pinakita naman natin, di ba, doon sa budget ng 2022 and 2023, na walang expressly provided for na budget allocation for 2022? So bakit siya entitled doon sa confidential fund?
It was the 2022 appropriation for contingent fund, Madam Chair.
Okay, so nagkaroon ngayon ng, ano no, ng contingent fund na 125 million released on December 13 and disbursed by December 31, 2022. Tama po ba?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Okay, pwede ba na... Pwede ba na magbigay ang presidente ng confidential fund sa ibang ahensya o sa sarili niya ng walang authorization ng Congress?
Madam Speaker, ano ang definition ng bigay?
I mean, pwede bang... From the... So ito, kasi binanggit mo kanina, 'yung contingent, binanggit na natin kanina 'yung contingent. So pwede bang magbigay ang presidente ng contingent, ah, ng confidential fund ng OVP na nanggaling sa contingent fund?
Madam Speaker, define bigay, Madam Speaker.
Well, ano bang ibig sabihin ng English ng bigay? So from the contingent fund na 7 billion, nagtransfer, oh sige, nagtransfer from contingent fund authorized by the president through the recommendations ng DBM from contingent fund ay nagtransfer ng CF or confidential fund sa 2022 na budget, o sa OVP budget?
Madam Speaker, ang problema kasi sasalitang bigay is hindi naman po 'yan sa presidente. Kaya hindi po niya pwedeng ibigay 'yan. Ang contingent fund, Madam Speaker, ay special purpose fund. Hindi po 'yan, pag mamay-ari ng presidente po, ang contingent fund ay special purpose fund subject to the approval of the president, Madam Speaker. So, please qualify the word bigay, Madam Speaker.
Ah, yes, sige, 'yung transfer na lang po.
Please qualify, please define the word transfer, Madam Speaker.
So kung nagrequest ang OVP sa Office of the President ng CF...
Madam Speaker, you cannot request from the president, Madam Speaker.
So saan po nagrequest ang OVP ng confidential fund?
Madam Speaker, 'yan ang problema sa ating...
Bakit meron sa nakalagay sa financial report, 'yung saob, na nanggaling sa contingent fund? Okay, so galing sa contingent fund, itong 125, plus 'yung, ano, Madam Chair, 'yung medical, ano yata 'yun, medical expenses na more than 90 million, medical or financial expenses. So ang total nga niya na nanggaling sa confidential as a contingent fund ay 221 billion, 424.
Madam Speaker, it is very clear that our colleague is confused about the nature of this fund, a special purpose fund. This is lodged with the DBM.
Madam Speaker, hindi po ako confused. Alam ko po 'yung sinasabi ko, okay? So based dun sa mga documents, so ang sabi mo kanina, no, sabi natin kanina, merong contingent fund, na nakita naman natin ito, no, doon sa report ng Office of the Vice President mismo, na merong sa saob, Madam Chair, ah, Madam Speaker, 'yung saob, ito po 'yung statement of obligation, disbursement, balances, et cetera, na may nanggaling sa contingent fund at dinala doon sa, ano no, doon sa Office of the Vice President. Isa ay confidential fund at isa po ay doon sa financial and medical fund or, yes, medical and, medical or... medical or assistance. Okay, so 221 million.
Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker. There seems to be no question. What is the question again, Madam Speaker?
Okay, parang nasasayang 'yung oras natin, ah, Madam Speaker. So, I think hindi ko nakakayanan 'yung time kung papayagan...
Well, Madam Speaker, I will gladly give you how... every time, I mean, whatever time is needed to clarify this very important issue. Kahit na dalawang oras po tayo dito, I will give it to you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Speaker, thank you for our distinguished sponsor. So kanina, ang sinasabi ko, Madam Speaker...
At wala po medical expense po diyaan. Wala po ako nakita medical expense sa mga dokumento.
Okay, so kung bibigyan lang ako ng pagkakataon, ah, Madam Speaker, doon sa pinanggalingan nitong tinutukoy nating 125, ano no, billion na confidential fund at saka doon sa, tinutukoy nating 96.4 na medical or financial assistance. Kasi nakareflect doon sa saro, kung pwedeng maipakita, Madam Speaker, sa PowerPoint, meron din po tayo nun, 'yung sa saro, nakareflect po doon 'yung pinanggalingan ng pondong, kung saan siya, or, 'yung saro po ay 'yung... 'yung approval ng DBM ng pondong ito na nanggaling doon sa contingent fund. So yun po. 221,424, Madam Speaker.
So ano po 'yung tanong? Saan siya galing? Ang tanong is bakit walang Congress approval? Meron po, okay, ang congressional approval po ay 'yung contingent fund, okay? Yun po ang appropriation. At maliwanag po, base sa Supreme Court decision, na iyan po ay valid na line item appropriation. Maliwanag po yun. Dahil yun nga po 'yung purpose, maliwanag po sa Bellica versus Ochoa, na iyan ang purpose ng contingent fund. Dahil nga po, hindi na nga po natin ma-anticipate lahat po ng pangangailangan ng ating gobyerno two years in advance. Kaya nilalagay sa special purpose fund, sa DBM, at hinihingi na lang ng ahensya sa DBM ang kanilang pangangailangan in kaso na merong new or urgent project or activities as they go along. So yun po ang purpose. At nakaindicate po sa special provision ang mga examples sa ganyang mga pangangailangan, but it is very clear na hindi limited sa tatlong examples na ka-enumerate. So yun po, dito sa special provision, ito po ang... ito po ang authorization sa paggamit ng contingent fund. Ngayon po, ang importante po is merong existing line item doon po sa Office of the Vice President. At maliwanag po ang existing line item doon po sa Office of the Vice President 2022 GA, which is the good governance project and social services project. Yun po 'yung existing line item of which one of the objects of expenditure is confidential expense. Liliwanagin ko po, ang confidential expense is not a line item. Hindi po siya line item. Hindi po lahat na nakikita ninyong salita doon sa NEP o sa GA ay line item. Hindi po. Ang line item lamang sa NEP o sa GA ay ang tinatawag na projects, activities, or programs, 'yung PAP. Yun lamang po ang line item. Ang iba po doon, 'yung objects of expenditure, hindi po 'yung online item. Tulad ng PS, MOE, capital outlay, 'yung pong supplies, traveling expenses, hindi po 'yung line item. Ang tanging line item ay 'yung mga tinatawag na PAP. Ang PAP doon sa OVP 2022 budget, na kung saan kasama ang confidential expense ay 'yung nabanggit ko na nga po na good governance engagements and social services project. Kaya po, sinasabi natin na authorized po, expressly allowed po itong confidential expense noong 2022.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Pero hindi pa rin niya sinasagot po, no, 'yung tanong ko. Ah, tingin natin itong sinasabi nating confidential fund, huwag nating pagbanggain, ano, 'yung confidential and the general provision ng, ay, 'yung special provision ng contingent fund at saka 'yung special provision. Dahil ipinakita ko naman talaga 'yung dokumento at hindi naman maikakaila, 'yung 2022 at saka 'yung 2023 na expressly provided for dapat 'yung budget ng confidential fund, okay? At kung gagamitin man ito doon sa mga projects or doon sa programs na binabanggit na good governance, et cetera, dapat po meron talagang expressly provided for budget allocation for confidential funds. So yun po 'yung, yun po 'yung gusto nating linawin doon. At meron tayong provision sa 1987 Constitution, Article 6, Section 25, about the discretionary funds. Kasi itong contingent fund, ah, Madam Speaker, this is some sort of discretionary funds appropriated for a particular officials. Ang sinasabi po dito sa Article 6, Section 25, discretionary funds appropriated for particular officials shall be disbursed only for public purposes to be supported by appropriate vouchers and subject to such guidelines as may be prescribed by law. So ano po ba 'yung guidelines na naggo-govern doon sa confidential fund? So yun po, 'yung tinutukoy natin, no, 'yung 125, ano no, 125 million. So yun po ang sinasabi natin. So I beg to disagree na merong expressly provided for na budget allocation ang OVP sa taong 2022. Dahil pinakita natin ang GA 2022 and GA 2023, Madam Chair, ay Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, ang sinasabi lamang dito sa contingent fund special provision ay... And I shall read the following special provision. The amount of 13 billion pesos appropriated herein shall cover the funding requirements of new or urgent activities or projects. So yun lamang po ang kailangan, na merong new or urgent activity or project. At pinakita natin na merong ganong klasing activity at sinabi ko na po earlier, at ang pangalan ng activity na yun, ayun na nga po, good governance, engagements, et cetera. So, yun na po. Pinakita na po natin, yun na po ang, sinatisyain na po natin ang conditions stated here, dito po sa ating special provision. So, we've complied with the requirements of the special provision.
Yes, we have extended another seven minutes and if Honorable Castro can wrap up her last question.
So, Madam Speaker, hindi pa rin po ako satisfied na dito sa sagot. So, 'yung special provision on contingent fund must be implemented in, consistent with the general provision on confidential funds. So only agencies authorized by the Congress through the budget allocation expressly provided for in the GA or other laws are entitled to CF, okay? Kung merong expressly provided for. So yun po 'yung, ayun po 'yung pinakaano eh, 'yung pinaka-key. Kung dapat ba o dapat na magkaroon ng contingent fund. Kung dapat ba o dapat na magkaroon ng contingent fund ang isang ahensya. Otherwise, ah, Madam Speaker, 'yung executive can grant itself CF, NIF na unchecked. So, so therefore, so kahit, kahit na kailan na lang ano, itong contingent fund kung gagamitin, kung saan man o kung saan mang mga budget, kung wala naman ito doon sa, ah, line item, ay hindi rin pwede. So, yun po 'yung sinasabi natin. At sinas... at lapup na po, at kung... at kung titignan po natin itong pangyayari na ito, meron pong, ah, iligal na nangyari doon sa pagtanggap, iligal 'yung pagre-request, at iligal 'yung paggastos po nitong confidential fund noong 2022 sa Office of the Vice President. So, yun lang po, ah, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker? Madam Speaker?
Yes, Honorable Stela Kimbo, please.
Just to note, um, again, I just want to, to state that, ah, the, the Supreme Court has, um, ruled on the constitutionality of the contingent fund. Again, the purpose of the fund is to cover funding requirements for the unforeseen or urgent projects, um, that would arise during the year. And it is really impossible for, for Congress, ah, to identify, um, such contingencies. Um, and, ah, and so such, um, fund, ah, really, um, needs to, ah, there's, there's a purpose for, for, for that kind of a fund. And, and also, um, the, the, in the Belica versus, um, Ochoa case, it is, ah, very clear that, ah, that the contingent fund was validated as a line item appropriation. So, I want that clear. It is a line item appropriation.
Majority Leader.
Ah, Madam Speaker, pwede ko bang...
Majority Leader.
Ah, Madam Speaker. So, otherwise, I will manifest for second round.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Deputy Speaker Sid Ungab for her rejoinder.
The Honorable DS Sid Ungab, you're recognized.
Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen of this chamber, good afternoon. Much has been said about this topic on the 125 million confidential funds. So, I decided to do some research being a former chairman of this committee. And, ah, I just want to explain this, that the 125 million confidential funds went through the proper procedure. It was requested by the OVP to DBM. DBM evaluated it and requested the approval of the Office of the President. And the President himself approved to release from the special purpose funds. The special purpose funds that includes the contingency fund, which is the source of those 125 million plus something like, ah, another amount for other expenditures. Madam Chair, during the discussions, the Chair, the Senior Vice Chair of the Committee on Appropriations had repeated many times the legality of the contingency fund. Aside from that, contingent fund are being provided for new and existing. In other words, providing new. It seems that the confusion is the thinking that this is an augmentation. This is not an augmentation. This is a new appropriation from the contingency fund. And I would like to read, 'yung sinasabi na kailangan ng budgetary item doon yun sa rules of augmentation. And that has been the ruling, yes, in the DAP and other, ah, cases. But in this particular case, rules of augmentation does not apply because the funds came from contingency fund. Now, let me read the rules on augmentation. Augmentation is the act of the constitutional officers authorized to use current year savings in their respective appropriations to cover actual year deficiencies in any existing item of appropriation within their respective offices. A deficiencies and item of appropriation may result from, okay, one, two, three. Ah, one, two deficiencies. Next, paragraph. The particulars of the expenditures to be funded should be within the scope of covered by existing activity or project. Yun, pag augmentation, kailangan mo, kung galing ka sa savings, there must be an existing budgetary item. This is not coming from savings. This is not coming from augmentation. This is coming from contingency fund, which allows new and existing appropriations. Medyo tumatandaan ako dito. If you were present in my lecture for the new fights, iklaro ko yan. These are the special budgetary provisions, special purpose funds, covered by special provisions, covered by general provisions. So, the general provisions on which the funds came from will, the one that will govern the release. And it is covered by a general provision or a special provision. So, this is not augmentation. Kaya pwedeng walang budgetary item. So, that's my explanation, Madam Chair. I hope I was clear.
Thank you, DS Ungab, Majority Leader.
Ah, May I, may I rebat, Madam Speaker?
Ah, you already consumed your time, ah, Honorable Castro.
So, may I, ah, register for second...
Majority Leader.
Second round.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend session for 30 minutes.
Session suspended for 30 minutes.